She said, "Boy, tell me honestly, was it real or just for show?" Yeah. She said, "Savior of all lives, baby, I just gotta know." How long has this been going on? You've been creeping around on me while you're calling me baby. How long has this been going on? You've been acting so shady. I've been feeling it lately, baby. How long has this been going on? You've been creeping around on me while you're calling me baby. How long has this been going on? You've been creeping around on me while you're calling me baby. How long has this been going on? You've been acting so shady. I've been feeling it lately, baby.
Introduced me to your family. Watched my favorite shows on your TV. Made me breakfast in the morning when you got home from work. Making plans to travel around the world. Said we'd always put each other first. Old love songs we used to play too funny now I hate you. Now I remember when you called me late at night. I give you my hours and advice just trying to fix you. And all your daddy issues, but now I don't even miss you anymore. So I, I want all the tears back that I cried. All the hours spent giving advice on how to write your songs. All you did was prove me wrong when you said you loved me. Well, you must have had your fingers crossed. Should have paid attention to my friends. Telling me how bad it's gonna end. Always giving their opinions. Now I wish I would have listened. I could say I'm sorry, but I'm not. You don't deserve the one thing that you love. Now I remember when you called me late at night. And I give you my hours and advice just trying to fix you. And all your daddy issues, but now I don't even miss you anymore. So I, I want all the tears back that I cried. All the hours spent giving advice on how to write your songs. All you did was prove me wrong when you said you loved me. Well, you must have had your fingers crossed.
Meeting of June 18th, 2025 is called to order. This meeting has been properly noticed and posted in compliance with the open meeting law. These proceedings are being video recorded and can be viewed live on the City of Las Vegas TV on Cox Cable Channel 2. You could also watch the meeting live online and access other city content by visiting LasVegasNevada.gov/Connect. The proceedings will be rebroadcast on City of Las Vegas TV the Wednesday of the meeting at 8:00 PM and also on Friday at 4:00 AM, Saturday at 7:00 PM, Sunday at 7:00 AM, and the following Monday at 5:00 PM. This building is protected by a state-of-the-art fire detection and suppression sprinkler system. If alarms should activate during today's meeting, please evacuate using the exits at the back of the chambers out to the mezzanine. Proceed out the double doors to the terrace and down the back staircase. For anyone that has difficulty with stairs, please check with a marshal or fire official for assistance. Once outside, assemble on the northeast corner across the street from City Hall at Lewis and First Street. Employees wearing safety vests or our city marshals will inform you when it is safe to re-enter the building. For public comment related to the items on the agenda, citizen participation and public hearing items, we have available a speaker card which you can complete and submit to the city clerk. Cards are available in the clerk's office or at the rear of the chambers. If you do not submit a card, it does not prevent you from speaking under public comment, citizen's participation, or specified public hearing items. If there is anyone present today that has a need for hearing impaired equipment, please see the city clerk's staff. Please note, if you parked in the parking garage across the street, a self-validation machine is located in the foyer between council chambers and the security desk you walk through to enter these chambers. You must have your ticket with you to use the machine. If you do not have your ticket, see security personnel when exiting for a validation coupon. We will now move on to item number three. Agenda item three, public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters on the agenda for action. The amount of time any single speaker is allowed may be limited. All comments made will be cross-referenced to those specific items. If anyone submitted a speaker card or who wishes to speak under this portion of the agenda, please come forward now to the podium, state your name for the record, and we will set the time at one minute. Would anybody care to speak? Seeing nobody, we will move to item number four. For possible action to approve the final minutes by reference of the Regular Redevelopment Agency meeting of May 21st, 2025. Mayor Pro Tem, is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Move to approve the minutes.
Please vote on the motion. Post. Motion carries. Agenda item number five, RA-13-2025, Discussion for Possible Action Regarding a Resolution Finding the Project Proposed by the Commercial Visual Improvement Program Agreement between the City of Las Vegas Redevelopment Agency and Goodhood LLC and Get in the Hole LLC Doing Business as Pachinko Pub Located at 211 South Las Vegas Boulevard, Suite 120, to be in compliance with and in furtherance of the goals and objectives of the redevelopment plan and authorizing the execution of the C-VIP agreement by the RDA not to exceed $25,000. RDA Special Revenue Fund, Redevelopment Area 1, Ward 3, Councilwoman Diaz. Please note, this item is related to Council Item Number 31, R-38-2025. Ms. Babski.
Yes, good morning, Mayor. Good morning, City Council members. Deana Babski, Director of Economic and Urban Development for the city. We are presenting for your consideration today a VIP grant. The project is located at 211 South Las Vegas Boulevard in the newly remodeled old post office. It's a staple building in the community, and we were very excited to have the building completed. And now here is the applicant to request the VIP grant for one of the tenants that are going in there.
Hello.
Welcome.
Oh, I'm sorry. Let me introduce our guest on behalf of the applicant, or actually is the owner of Pachi Pachi, is Mr. Mark Evansfold. And so, Mark, welcome. We're very excited to have you.
Thank you very much.
So the project is located, as you know, in downtown Las Vegas in Ward 3, Councilwoman Diaz. In the surrounding area, there's a lot of momentum happening between the newly remodeled commercial offices. As we know, it's very close to our civic district, so it's going to be a great addition to the area. Currently, as you see on the photos, this is a vacant space, and the applicant is applying to help with some of the facade, to pay for some of the facade improvements. These are some of the renderings for the signage, the newly, the signage that will be installed along with some plantains at the entrance and those beautiful gongs. But I won't take the thunder away from Mr. Mark, and I'll let him talk more about the project. So overall, the applicant is investing $54,000, which makes him eligible for $25,000 reimbursement from the RDA. And if and once this grant is approved, then the work will commence. With that, I'd like to pass the word over to Mr. Evansfold.
Okay, thank you very much. My name is Mark Evansfold. I'm the owner of Pachi Pachi, new restaurant opening downtown Las Vegas. I'm truly grateful for the opportunity to possibly be part of the city's VIP program. It means a lot, not just for me, but for the community and the neighborhood. Pachi Pachi brings together Tokyo-style street food, craft cocktails made with skilled mixologists, and lively music vibe, all wrapped in a fun, creative, and welcoming atmosphere. With your support, we can create an exterior that reflects the energy and adds something special to the area. Thank you for considering us.
Thank you very much, Mayor, and I hope you'll invite us to the grand opening.
Sure will, thank you.
Okay, are there any questions or comments from the agency members? Seeing none, is there a motion, Councilwoman Diaz?
Yes, Madam Mayor, welcome to the neighborhood. We're excited about you opening, but every single new restaurant is dangerous for my waistline. But with that, I'm going to move to approve agenda item five.
Thank you.
Shall we vote? Please post. Motion carries. We wish you great success.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councilman.
Agenda item number six, RA-14-2025, Discussion for Possible Action Regarding a Resolution Finding the Project Proposed by Commercial Visual Improvement Program Agreement between the City of Las Vegas Redevelopment Agency and FBGM Investments LLC Located at 401 South Sixth Street, to be in compliance with and in furtherance of the goals and objectives of the redevelopment plan and authorizing the execution of a C-VIP agreement by the RDA not to exceed $25,000. RDA Special Revenue Fund, Redevelopment Area 1, Ward 3, Councilwoman Diaz. Please note, this item is related to Council Item 32, R-39-2025. Ms. Babski.
Thank you, Mayor, and Councilmembers. Deana Babski, Director of Economic and Urban Development for the city. And with me here today is the applicant, Mr. Jordan Dennison, welcome.
Thank you.
For your consideration, today's a $25,000 VIP grant. The project location is 401 South Sixth Street. As you can see, it is located between the George Federal Courthouse and the Las Vegas Academy. As we all know, the area is currently experiencing a resurgence of different commercial remodeling projects. So this is the exterior before, some of you may recognize it. This used to be the Andres Restaurant, so you know, that's, I have never been in it, but I'm sure some folks have, so we're very excited. The VIP grant will help to pay for the improvements on the parking lot to support the newly remodeled restaurant space. With that, there's going to be additional landscaping and some stucco repair on the As you can see, these are some of the renderings for the parking lot once the construction commences, but the applicant has invested over $250,000, so again, makes them eligible for $25,000 RDA reimbursement grant. And with that, I'd like to give the word over to you, Mr. Dennison, to tell us more.
Thank you. It's an honor to be here. Just like she said, I'm seeking for the VIP grant. We're in the process currently of renovating the interior, and I think we should have it completed in the next couple of months. The parking lot is a dog, so our goal is to just get it repaved, put in a grease trap so it's up and running, and then we believe we have a tenant that'll be an Italian restaurant coming in in the next couple of months, once that's complete. I've got a couple of buildings down here currently that we've, that are like two matchsticks that caught on fire that we've rehabbed completely and got, had the ability to get rented. It's an honor to be here, and we hope to continue to grow.
Well, we thank you very much for being here. Are there any questions and comments or comments from Redevelopment members? Seeing none, is there a motion, Councilwoman Diaz?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you for bringing that building back to life. A lot of us have been wanting something to go back into the old Andres, and hearing that it's Italian again, another dangerous proposition for my waistline, but I'm going to go ahead and move.
That's why I've got my stretchy suit on.
And it looks very nice.
Yeah, thank you.
I'm going to move to approve agenda item six.
Shall we vote? Please post. Motion carries. Best of luck. When I was a young attorney many, many years ago, I had a number of wonderful meals at Andres and very memorable ones. So I'm very excited that we're going to be utilizing that great space again, so best of luck to you.
You remember those old, like, 80 knit sweaters? I had a, when I was standing in the lobby of the restaurant, I was looking back at the, like, one of the rooms in there, and I had a flashback, and I didn't know I went there, and I asked my mom, I said, "I've been here before," and she goes, "Oh, I know the guy that owns the building." And I said, "You sure?" And she goes, "Yeah, it's an old friend of mine." I said, "Well, I just bought it." She goes, "Oh, I didn't know that." I got the photos as a kid, and we were sitting in one of the corners in one of those old lovely sweaters, so it's, it's.
I still have a number of those lovely sweaters. I'm sure they're coming back into style.
Yeah, well, thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Well, best of luck.
Thank you.
Agenda item number seven, RA-15-2025, Discussion for Possible Action Regarding a Resolution Finding the Project Proposed by Commercial Visual Improvement Program Agreement between City of Las Vegas Redevelopment Agency and 1212 Casino Center LLC Located at 1212 South Casino Center Boulevard, to be in compliance with and in furtherance of the goals and objectives of the redevelopment plan and authorizing the execution of the C-VIP agreement by the RDA not to exceed $25,000. RDA Special Revenue Fund, Redevelopment Area 1, Ward 3, Councilwoman Diaz. Please note, this item is related to Council Item 33, R-40-2025. Ms. Babski.
Thank you, Mayor, and Councilmembers. Deana Babski, Director of Economic and Urban Development for the city. And with me here today is the representative for the applicant, Ms. Connie Ye, welcome. We are also very excited for another VIP grant in the Arts District, and the property location is at 1212 South Casino Center Boulevard. As we all know, there is intense growth in the Arts District with essentially, I don't know, new food and beverage places opening up, but we're excited for this one even more so because this is a, an office space. And so with the VIP grant of $25,000, the applicant will be doing exterior renovations to make this into a very popping new building. As you can see, this is the rendering, so there will be new paint, windows, entrance way, the signage for the business, as well as a mural, which obviously, because it's in the Arts District, is going to be a great addition. The applicant is investing $64,000, makes them eligible for the $25,000 VIP grant, and the work will commence if this application is approved today. With that, I'd like to pass the word over to Connie.
Awesome. Good morning. I'm Connie Ye. I'm part of the ownership team of this building, and we're really excited to be here today to present our project to you. One of our main partners is John Tippins, who has been involved with downtown for over 20 years. But everyone on our team has seen the amazing developments and the growth in businesses downtown in recent years, and we're really happy to be a part of it. We're looking forward to our partnership with the city, and we are excited about the exterior enhancements. We think it's going to add a lot. We tried to be really thoughtful with adding the lush greenery, the bricks, the metal accents and enhanced signage of the building, and also the mural. So we just wanted to say that we love the Arts District. We're so happy to be a part of it, and thank you for your time and consideration.
No, thank you very much for being here. Are there any questions or comments from the agency members? Seeing none, is there a motion, Councilwoman Diaz?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Looks significantly better with all that green, loving the green. So thank you so much for making these improvements, and with that, I'm going to move to approve agenda item seven.
Shall we vote? Please post. Motion carries. Best of luck.
Thank you.
Agenda item number eight, RA-16-2025, Discussion for Possible Action Regarding a Resolution Consent to the Real Property Purchase and Sale Agreement of .36 acres of vacant land located at 1421 South Las Vegas Boulevard between C. Tachia Holdings, is that close?
Yes.
Okay. LLC, the City of Las Vegas Redevelopment Agency, for the furtherance of the goals and objectives of the RDA, $1,125 million, RDA Special Revenue Fund, Redevelopment Area 1, Ward 3, Councilwoman Diaz. Note, please, this item is related to Council Item 34, R-41-2025. Ms. Babski.
Still here. Deana Babski, Director of Economic and Urban Development for the city. Thank you, Mayor, and Councilmembers. For your consideration today is the acquisition of .36 acres on Las Vegas Boulevard for the purchase price of $1,125 million. To give you a little background why we would like to acquire the site, a couple of months ago, you all approved acquisition of the adjacent site, which is right south of it, at 1431 South Las Vegas Boulevard. So we would like to purchase this one as well and combine the two parcels to make the future home of the affordable housing for the artists. As you may recall, we've been working with art space, so in order to make the project bigger and better and just, you know, serve the community to its fullest extent, this acquisition will be definitely a great help to that.
Thank you so much. Are there any questions or comments from the agency members? Seeing none, is there a motion, Councilwoman Diaz?
Thank you, Ms. Babski. It's always a good thing when we can expand the site, a future offerings, and we know this part of the boulevard is in much need of revitalization and TLC, so I'm happy that we're going to be part of getting, jump-starting that revitalization. So with that, I'm going to move to approve agenda item eight.
Shall we vote? Please post. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Agenda item nine, citizens' participation. Public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters within the jurisdiction of the Redevelopment Agency. No subject may be acted upon by the Redevelopment Agency unless that subject is on the agenda and is scheduled for action. If you wish to be heard, come to the podium and give your name for the record. The amount of discussion on any single subject, as well as the amount of time any single speaker is allowed, may be limited. Is there anybody wishing to speak under this portion of the agenda? Seeing nobody, this Redevelopment Agency meeting is adjourned. We will start our city council meeting promptly at 9:00 AM. Thank you so much for being here. Cards are available in the clerk's office or at the rear of the chambers. If you do not submit a card, it does not prevent you from speaking under public comment, citizens' participation, or specified public hearing items. If there is anyone present today that is in need of hearing impaired equipment, please see the city clerk's staff. Please note, if you are parked in the parking garage across the street, a self-validation machine is located in the foyer between council chambers and the security desk you walk through to enter these chambers. You must have your ticket with you to use the machine. If you do not have your ticket, see security personnel when exiting for a validation coupon. Before we proceed with the agenda, would everyone please rise for the invocation given by Reverend Charlotte Parker, Centers for Spiritual Living Greater Las Vegas, and please remain standing as she leads us in the pledge.
Good morning.
Morning.
Take a deep breath. Spirit of life, source of wisdom, God of our own understanding, known by many names. We pause in stillness to acknowledge your presence in our midst. In this shared space among neighbors of differing paths and stories, we come together for the common good. May we listen deeply, speak respectfully, and act with integrity. Grant us the humility to hear one another, not just words, but hearts. Help us to speak, not to seek, not victory, but understanding, not power, but purpose. In this chamber of civic duty, may we be guided by compassion over fear, by hope over cynicism, and by the quiet courage it takes to find common ground. Let each decision made be rooted in justice, nourished by kindness, and carried forth by wisdom for the well-being of all who call this city home. May we remember that our diversity is not a barrier, but a blessing, and that in our coming together, we mirror something sacred. May it be so. Amen.
Amen. Reverend, will you lead us in the pledge?
I would be honored. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. We appreciate it. We will now commence with the ceremonial portion of our agenda. You're doing 10. You wanna speak at 10? Okay, alright. We will commence our ceremonial items with recognition of the Employee of the Month. This is the ceremonial portion of our council agenda, and for our first item, I want to invite our Communications Director, David Riggleman, to join us at the podium. Our employees strive to meet our values of being kind, committed, and smart, and they work to build our community to make life better. I'm very proud to announce that the Employee of the Month is Ramon Camarillo?
Camarillo.
Camarillo. Okay, Ramon, please join us.[1161.42][1161.42][applause] Good to see you. I see him every morning in my office. Ramon is a mail clerk in the Office of Communications, has been with the city since 2008. He is seen all over city facilities as he delivers and picks up mail, and everywhere he goes, he has a smile. But that's not why the team in the Finance Department nominated him for this honor. Earlier this year, finance had thousands of important mailings that needed to go out, but there was a problem. Our vendor sent the wrong size envelopes, meaning our automated envelope stuffing machine wouldn't work. So Ramon stepped up and helped find solutions so the mailings could still go out properly and be timely. The day was saved. This is indicative of the work Ramon does every single day. He's a special employee who makes everyone he works with fear, feel that they are special as well. Ramon, thank you for all you do in the city of Las Vegas, and before we hear from you, and we're very anxious to hear from you, I wanna give Director Riggleman a chance to say a few words on your behalf.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. Happy to do it. Ramon, we are extra proud of you. Everyone, you may not know this, probably don't, this is the second time that Ramon has received the Employee of the Month recognition. Second time.[1258.74][1258.74][applause] It's virtually unheard of. We have thousands of employees here, so the fact that you win it once is a big deal, but to win it two times is incredible. So it really speaks to the special employee and to the great work you do here at the city of Las Vegas. Ramon, you know so much of what we do in our office, the public sees. We win Emmy awards, and we've been nominated for two more Emmy awards, our television crew, in fact. Our social media team recently won the Golden Post Award, goes to the top government social media team in the nation, a huge honor.[1294.74][1294.74][applause] A, a, a big thing. But Ramon, we also have employees like you, whose work is just as special, just as vital, and you do just as great work, but the public doesn't always get to see that because you're working more behind the scenes. So Mayor and Council, I wanna thank you, because every month, we recognize an Employee of the Month, often many of them like Ramon, working behind the scenes, and thanks to you, their story gets to be told to the public. I also wanna thank the finance people who nominated Ramon. You know, it looked like business as usual from the outside, because they figured out how to take care of the envelopes, and out they went. But we know that thanks to you, it, you saved the day, and, and so thank you, finance people, for making sure that Ramon got the recognition that he deserves. And finally, Employee Recognition Committee, I wanna thank you guys, because you're the ones, yes, Edo back there, I see, and Kelly, thank you, because you help make sure that our employees like Ramon, the unsung folks, that their story gets told, the public gets to hear about the great work they do, even though not everybody gets to see it every day. So with that, I think, you know, everybody, could I ask you to please give Ramon maybe one more round of applause?[1368.65][1368.65][applause] And with your permission, Mayor, I'm gonna turn this microphone over to our guest of honor here.
Thank you, Mayor, for all this time. Thank you, Deana.
Good morning, everybody. I would like to start by thanking my family for being here with me to accept this award, which is right here. I would also like to thank Anne Florian Larson for nominating me. I am grateful that she put her trust in me to help with this project of the W2 forms that needed to be sent out in a timely manner. I would also like to thank my coworkers that have helped me on a daily basis, my directors that put their trust in what I do every day, and everyone here in City Hall. Thank you very much.[1419.24][1419.24][applause]
Now, okay, why don't we go get a nice picture?
Okay.
And would you like to invite your family to come?
Oh, thank you, that's very nice. Thank you.
Come on down.
They've done this before, they know this.[1452.11][1452.11][applause] We're all grown up now, guys.
My granddaughter.
Oh, my goodness.
Yeah.
Nice job.
Congratulations.
Thank you, very much.
Thank you.
You guys squish it together.
Hello.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Goodbye, young lady.
Good to see you again.
Thank you.
All right.
Dave, I certainly hope we didn't pay for the wrong size envelopes.
No, we did not.
For our final ceremonial item today, Mayor Pro Tem Knudsen has the honor of recognizing the Las Vegas Fire and Rescue Technical Rescue Team. Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you very much, Mayor, and I have the, the distinct honor of, first off, reading this proclamation, 'cause I'm gonna get that out of the way, and while I'm reading it, I issued a challenge to the chief to see if he can get these wonderful people from Fire and Rescue up here in a very organized manner, so I'm gonna see if he can do it. Nobody else has done it yet.[1517.47][1517.47][laughter] So this is the reading of the proclamation. Whereas, Las Vegas Fire and Rescue's Technical Rescue Team, the Las Vegas Valley's longest-tenured specialized technical rescue team, is comprised of approximately 60 members and has served tirelessly in the quest for excellence in saving the lives of those who need rescuing within the city of Las Vegas. And whereas, Las Vegas Fire and Rescue's Technical Team was formalized in the year 2000, and that time was focused on structural collapse and rope rescue, and after September 11th, 2001, and with the continued growth of the city, the team has further enhanced its capabilities and expertise. And whereas, Las Vegas Fire and Rescue's Technical Rescue Team has been a valued partner to Nevada's Task Force One's Urban Search and Rescue Team. And whereas, Las Vegas Fire and Rescue's Technical Rescue Team exemplifies the mission of Las Vegas Fire and Rescue by reducing risk, protecting life, preventing loss, and serving our community proudly. And whereas, we thank Las Vegas Fire and Rescue's Technical Rescue Team for its unwavering dedication to serve our citizens and visitors, and now, nice job.[1572.11][1572.11][laughter] I gotta say it, but I was impressed. Nice job. We, the mayor and members of the Las Vegas City Council, do hereby take great pride in proclaiming June 18th, 2025, as Las Vegas Fire and Rescue's Technical Rescue Team Day. Nice job. I'm gonna hand this.[1586.99][1586.99][applause] Hold on. Okay, so before I hand the mic over, I just wanted to let everyone know, so there's two times that I've, that I've really spent a good, a good amount of time with you, with you all. The first time, I volunteered to hang out of a tree, so that, so that in the academy, you could, you could practice saving somebody from a, from a, getting stuck in, in a palm tree, which happens here in Las Vegas. And so when you're, when you're stuck 60 feet high, tied hip to hip with, with somebody, lowering you down to the ground, you have a great conversation, 'cause there's nothing else to do, for me. So here, here's what I learned, is you have some folks up here, is this is right out of high school, this is their dream job, they wanted to do this, and obviously became great and skilled at what they do. You have other people, this is a second career for them, and they, they chose to do something that was meaningful and, and something that brings pride to themselves and their family. But at the end of the day, here, here's why you guys are special for me, is because I drive my kids around all the time, I'm a chauffeur, basically, and with the amount of fatalities and the amount of bad accidents we have going on right now, I think every single day, what's gonna happen if I get in an accident with my kids? And in the last showcase that we went to with IFF and the Fire and Rescue Team, you guys showed us what you do when you take apart a car, so there, there, these are the people who are take apart a car, in addition to lowering you from a, from a palm tree. And it was then, it's like, it hits you, it's like, if I'm in the worst time in my life, the very worst time, these are the people who are gonna be there to save me, and no one's gonna thank them afterwards, they have to come in when it's super hot outside or super cold outside, and at the very worst moment in your life, these are the people who you're gonna see, they're the, they're the ones who are gonna save you. So for that, I will never be able to do what you do, but I like pretending as much as I can. I am really, really impressed with everything that you guys do, and you should be very, very proud of, of everything you've done and everything you do to make our community feel safe, 'cause it's that feeling of safety that makes Las Vegas just the best place to live. Thank you for being part of Fire and Rescue's Technical Rescue Team for the amount of time and energy you put into it, and I will turn it over to the chief.[1704.11][1704.11][applause]
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Can everyone hear me okay? Again, first and foremost, I wanna say thank you for recognizing the men and women of our technical rescue team. Before I actually say a few words, I do wanna recognize someone that's really special today, that's firefighter/paramedic Pilcher. Let's give him a hand clap, and then I'll tell you why this is special.[1730.01][1730.01][applause] So firefighter/paramedic Pilcher actually has been with our department for 10 years. Believe it or not, he just got back six days ago from being in the Army's basic training. So again, very dedicated person, not just to our organization, but to our country, and again, thank you so much for everything you do. Let's give him one last hand clap.[1753.51][1753.51][applause] For the council and the residents that are in the audience, I just kinda wanna make sure that I provide some information for your edification. These folks that are up here, they're not just, again, technical rescue And again, thank you so much for everything you do. Let's give him one last hand clap. For the council and the residents that are in the audience, I just kind of want to make sure that I provide some information for your edification. These folks that are up here, they're not just, again, technical rescue specialists, they're also very good firefighters, they're also very good paramedics. So again, they are truly all hazards as it relates to making sure that our community is kept safe. So again, I just want each and every last one of you to know how proud I am to serve as your fire chief. Again, I love each and every last one of you, and keep up the good work. Now, I am going to ask Chief Will Banks, if you don't know, Chief Will Banks is actually our special operations chief, to basically say some words on behalf of our technical rescue team. But again, thank you so much, Mayor Pro Tem, thank you, Council, and thank you to the manager's office for your continued support of equipping this group with the necessary tools that they need to be successful. So Chief Will Banks?
Good morning, everybody. Mayor, City Council members, thank you for your time. Through my career, I came up through the hazmat side, and some of you guys have heard the joke that I say, you know, you guys save the individual, whereas the hazmat team saves the community. Well, that punchline in itself is exactly what I'd like to emphasize. The amount of time and effort and care and dedication that you guys put in to saving a life, multiple lives, is absolutely fantastic. What I've learned as I've taken this role is you guys are the best. Our tech rescue team in the valley is the best in the valley, so you should be very, very proud of that. Before I part ways, on behalf of Chief Gray and the TRT, we'd like to give you that. Thank you very much. So finally, congratulations to all of you guys standing here, the folks who couldn't make it, the retired folks who've all made this team what it is today. Thank you.
So again, this is on the worst day of your life, these are the faces you're going to see, hopefully it's on your best day, too. But thank you on behalf of the mayor and city council, and this is, we practiced with the picture before, so you guys ready this time? Okay, get in, this is how you do it.
Oh, she secretly told me she wants to do it.
Nice job.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much, really appreciate it. Good to see you.
Hey, good to see you, too. Absolutely, yeah, it was good to see you. Thank you very much.
Thanks for everything. I'll see you. Appreciate it. Nice job. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
And now I'd like to turn the microphone over to Councilwoman Sandra Summers Armstrong for another presentation.
Thank you so much, Mayor, and thank you all for being here this morning. Today is quite a special day in Ward Five. It's a day of happiness, but also a day of kind of sadness. I've been here since December the 4th, and when I came into this office, I had support, and that support was from Kelly Woods. Kelly came to the city of Las Vegas in 2018 to support the Ward Five office under Councilman Cedric Creer, and I asked her when I was elected if she would stay and help to stabilize our office, and she said, eh, eh, how about six months? And I said, please, and she said, okay, six months. We actually got seven. And I'm so proud of her. She exemplifies all of the things that we want as public servants. She's kind, she's committed, she's smart, but she's diligent, she cares about the community, and she cares about Ward Five. Kelly, can you come up this morning, please? She hates to be in public, she's very quiet, she hates to be in the spotlight, but I could not miss an opportunity to honor someone who is retiring, and she's put in yards. She worked for Clark County, and she's worked for the city, and her career here in Las Vegas has been public service, caring for all of us, and doing a wonderful job. So I'm trying not to cry off my eyelashes, but I just want to tell you, thank you. We have a little certificate for you, and it says, "The Office of," this chick right here, "Certificate of Recognition, Kelly Woods, presented by the Las Vegas City Council in recognition of your retirement, and with heartfelt gratitude for seven years of dedicated service to the Las Vegas City Council Ward Five Office. Your commitment, professionalism, and impact will not be forgotten, with appreciation and best wishes for the future. June 18th, 2025."
Thank you. I appreciate you. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, I appreciate that. Say a few words. I see friends and family here, I didn't expect that this morning. And Councilwoman, thank you so much. To my council folks, thank you guys always for allowing me in your office and helping me to get the job done. To all my special assistants out there, woo-hoo, because that's how we do, that's how we do, we help each other, and that's great. And then just the last thing is, again, I'm a woman of few words, so many city employees are kind, committed, and smart, and the city does a great job. Thank you to the leadership team as well, Mike, your guys. Thank you, everyone, I appreciate it.
All right, we'll take a picture together, and then, family, we'd like you to also come up, because Mom's here, yes? All right.
We will now proceed with the rest of our agenda.
But good? Okay. Public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters on the agenda for action. The amount of time any single speaker is allowed may be limited. All comments made will be cross-referenced to those specific items. If anyone submitted a speaker card or who wishes to speak under this portion of the agenda, please come to the podium and state your name for the record. This is your opportunity to address the council, but the council is not able to respond or engage in dialogue. We will set the time at two minutes. Is there anybody that would like to address the council under this agenda item? Seeing nobody, we will move to Agenda Item Number Eight. For possible action, any items from the 9:30 a.m. session that the council, staff, and/or the applicant wish to be stricken, tabled, withdrawn, or held in abeyance to a future meeting may be brought forward and acted upon at this time. Mayor Pro Tem.
Madam Mayor, I'm going to, Ms. Olson, I think, is up here, and I was going to ask for an additional request. Before I say that, can I ask Ms. Olson to speak?
Yes, good morning, Liz Olson, 1980 Festival Plaza Drive, here on behalf of Somerset Academy, which is Item Number 59. We'd like to request an abeyance for 30 days to the July 16 hearing, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
It's not, but I believe this is another request for an abeyance. Is that on?
Yes.
Okay, do you mind?
Hi, good morning. My name is Starmer Mahal, and I represent Chicks Dig Scars and Dapper Development, and we would like to request an abeyance for Item Number 50 for 30 days until July 16.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem.
Madam Mayor, I'm going to try to do this, and while I'm reading it off, I think Mr. Floyd had mentioned Item 58 as well, but I didn't hear that one. So before I read, I heard 50 and 59.
Mayor Pro Tem, Seth Floyd, for the record, that was my mistake, it was 59, not 58. So I apologize for that.
Here we go. Item 42, 25-008, SGP One, applicant owner 7676 Lake Mead Buffalo LLC at 7676 West Lake Mead Boulevard, Suite 101. There's a request to strike by staff, 51A through 51E, 24-0190, GPA 1, ZON 1, VAR 1, VAR 2, STR 1. Applicant is William Brown, owner H&amp;H Investment Realty on 1.18 acres on the southwest corner of Owens and Gateway. There's an abeyance request to the July 16, 2025 meeting by the applicant. 52A through 52B, 24-0508, VAR 1, ZON 1. Applicant is Champion Resource Group LLC, owner is DFA LLC, 1.32 acres located across Harvey Mumford Street, approximately 725 south of Washington Avenue. There's an advance request by the applicant to the August 6, 2025 city council meeting. Item 53, 24-051001, applicant is Champion Resource Group LLC, owner is DFA LLC on 2.68 acres, generally located at the southwest corner of Washington Avenue and Harvey Mumford Street. There's an abeyance request by the applicant until the August 6, 2025 city council meeting. 55A through 55E, 25-0032, GPA 1, ZON 1, VAR 1, VAR 2, and STR 1. Applicant is Shalom Boganim, owner is ASD Group LLC on 1.71 acres at the southwest corner of Owens and Henry Drive. There's an abeyance request by the applicant until July 2, 2025 city council meeting. Item 57, 24-0513, VAR 1. Variance, public hearing, applicant is Santos Aguilar, owner is Leani Gonzalez Argules on 1.14 acres at 2104 Santa Rita Drive. There's a request by Councilwoman Diaz to obey until the July 16, 2025 city council meeting. Item Number 50, 25-0214, LLC One. Review of condition, this is a public hearing, applicant is Dapper Development, owner is Chicks Dig Scars, and this is on a land use entitlement project, to amend conditions one, two, and four, and to remove conditions five. There's an abeyance request by the applicant until the--
And what number is that?
Item 50.
50.
There's an advance request by the applicant until the July 16 city council meeting. And Item Number 59, 25-0067, public hearing, applicant is Somerset Academy of Las Vegas, owner is Somerset Academy of Las Vegas, et al. This is for possible action on the following land use entitlement project on 15.92 acres at Sky Point Drive, and there's a request to obey until the July 16, 2025 city council meeting. And I believe that'll be my motion, unless there's anything else that I've missed.
Okay, shall we vote? Please post. Motion carries. Agenda Item Number Nine, for possible action to approve the final minutes by reference of the May 21st, 2025 regular city council meeting and special joint city council and redevelopment agency budget meetings. Mayor Pro Tem, may I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Shall we vote? Please post. Agenda Item 10. Items Number 10 through 34 are on the consent agenda, are considered to be routine, are recommended for approval by the departments, and may be enacted in one motion. Councilwoman Seaman, I understand you'd like to make a comment on Item 10.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Instead of simply rubber stamping another long-term contract and continuing to pour good money after bad, I know and I want to thank our city team for negotiating aggressively for a new agreement that breaks from the Animal Foundation's track record of failure, and that it takes time, hence why we need this extension, to do what's best long-term for animals. So for this reason, I will be a yes.
Thank you so much. Are there any other items the council wishes to bring forward? Seeing none, Mayor Pro Tem, may I have a motion for the consent agenda for Items 10 through 34?
Move to approve Items 10 through 34.
Please vote. Post. Motion passes. Agenda Item Number 35, Boards and Commissions. Discussion for possible action regarding the appointment of the following nominees to the Board of Directors of City of Las Vegas Strong Start Academy Elementary Schools, Inc. Alicia Aroro is my designee, Vanessa Mari, Ward One designee, Roxanne McCoy, Ward Five designee, to two-year terms ending June 18, 2027. All wards, if appointed, Alicia Aroro, Vanessa Mari, and Roxanne McCoy will serve an initial two-year term ending June 18, 2027. I move to approve these appointments. Let's vote. Please post.
Mine did not come up. Mine didn't come up, but I'm an I.
Motion carries. 34?
Move to approve Items 10 through 34.
Please vote. Post. Motion passes. Agenda Item Number 35, Boards and Commissions. Discussion for possible action regarding the appointment of the following nominees to the Board of Directors of City of Las Vegas Strong Start Academy Elementary Schools, Inc. Alicia Aroro is my designee, Vanessa Mari, Ward 1 designee, Roxanne McCoy, Ward 5 designee, to two-year terms ending June 18, 2027. All wards, if appointed, Alicia Aroro, Vanessa Mari, and Roxanne McCoy will serve an initial two-year term ending June 18, 2027. I move to approve these appointments. Let's vote. Please post.
Mine did not come up. Mine didn't come up, but I'm an I.
Motion carries. Agenda Item Number 36, New Bills. Items 36 through 41, Bills 2025-11, 2025-12, 2025-14, 2025-15, and 2025-16 will be heard at the Recommending Committee meeting on Monday, June 30, 2025. City Attorney, will you please read the new bills in a way that we could understand you?
All right. If you want it that way done. Bill Number 2025-11, in ordinance to readopt LVMC Section 10.2.10, the municipal code provision making state law misdemeanors city misdemeanors if committed within the city. Bill Number 2025-12, in ordinance to amend various provisions of LVMC Title 19 to update the standards applicable to residential tiny house parks and to provide further related matters. Bill Number 2025-13, in ordinance to amend various provisions of LVMC Title 7 pertaining to the regulation of pet shops and provide further related matters. Bill Number 2025-14, in ordinance to amend various provisions of LVMC Title 7, Chapter 40, related to the penalties for violations of various provisions of Title 7, to amend LVMC Title 7, Chapter 42 by adding a new section therein designated as Section 25, to prohibit newly licensed pet shops from selling dogs, cats, rabbits, or pot-bellied pigs, to amend LVMC Title 7, Chapter 42 by adding a new section designated as Section 85, to establish the penalty for violations of Section 25 and to provide further related matters. Bill Number 2025-15, in ordinance to extend the boundaries of the city to particularly describe the land to be annexed, to make its inhabitants subject to the laws, obligations, and benefits of the city, and to provide further related matters, 25-0118-A and X1. And finally, Bill Number 2025-16, in ordinance to extend the boundaries of the city to particularly describe the land to be annexed, to make its inhabitants subject to the laws, obligations, and benefits of the city, and to provide further related matters, 25-0148-A and X1.
Thank you very much. Items Number 42 through 50 appear on the One Motion, One Vote agenda. However, Item 42 was stricken, and Items 50 and 59 were held in abeyance earlier in this meeting. Items Number 43 through 49 may be considered in one motion, one vote, as they are routine items with no condition changes. Any person representing an application or a member of the public or a member of the council not in agreement with the conditions and all the standard conditions for the applications recommended by staff should request to have that item removed from this portion of the agenda. Item 43, 25-0104-MOD1. Applicant owner, The Howard Use Company LLC, for possible action on a land use entitlement project request to amend the Summerland Development Standards regarding perimeter fences and walls, courtyard walls, and refuge storage and disposal. This is Ward 2, Ms. Seaman. Ward 4, Ms. Alan Polensky. And Ward 1, Mr. Knutson. Item 44, 25-0116. Applicant owner, The Howard Use Company LLC, for a possible action on the following land use entitlement project request on 444.45 acres at the southwest corner of Lake Mead Boulevard and Clark County 215 PC Plan Community Zone, Ward 2, Ms. Seaman. Item 44A, 25-0116-MOD1, for the proposed modification of the parcel configuration on the approved development plan, MDR-73901, for Summerland Village 22. Item 44B, 25-0116-TMP1, for a 17-lot parent subdivision on 196.33 acres at the northeast corner of Sunset Run Drive and Kettle Ridge Drive. Item 45, 25-0131-SUP1. Applicant owner, City of Las Vegas, for possible action on a land use entitlement project request for a proposed rescue mission or shelter for the homeless use at 1450 North Main Street. Ward 5, Ms. Summers Armstrong. Item 46, 25-0150-SUP1. Applicant, The Peyote Room LLC. Owner, Blue Dream LV LLC, for possible action on a land use entitlement project request for a proposed 2,665 square foot banquet facility use at 2050 Pinto Lane, Suite Number Ward 1, Mr. Knutson. Item 47, 25-0191-RQR1. Applicant Reagan Outdoor Advertising of Nevada LLC. Owner, Highland Industrial Park LLC, for possible action on a land use entitlement project request for a required review of an approved special use permit for a 45-foot-tall 24-foot-by-48-foot off-premise sign at 2903 Highland Drive. M Industrial Zone, Ward 3, Ms. Diaz. Item 48, 25-0192-RQR1. Applicant Reagan Outdoor Advertising of Nevada LLC. Owner, Highland Industrial Park LLC, for possible action on a land use entitlement project request for a required review of an approved special use permit, SUP-1945, for a 45-foot-tall 24-foot-by-48-foot off-premise sign at 2901 Highland Drive. M Industrial Zone, Ward 3, Ms. Diaz. And Item Number 49, 25-0193-RQR1. Applicant Reagan Outdoor Advertising of Nevada LLC. Owner, 1991 LLC, for possible action on a land use entitlement project request for a required review of an approved special use permit, SUP-4690, for a 40-foot-tall 14-foot-by-48-foot off-premise sign at 2001 Western Avenue. M Industrial Zone, Ward 3, Ms. Diaz. Planning Commission and staff recommend approval of these items. These are public hearings that I now declare open. Is there anyone wishing to be heard on Items 43 through 49? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearings. Mayor Protem, may I have a motion for the One Motion, One Vote items?
Madam Mayor, move to approve Items 43 through 49.
Please vote. Post. Motion carries.
Madam Mayor, with your permission, I have a statement to read from the City Clerk's office, if that's okay?
Yes, of course.
This is in relation to Items 36 through 41. Bills Number 2025-11, 2025-12, 2025-13, and 2025-14, and 2025-15, and 2025-16 are assigned to the June 30, 2025, Recommending Committee members, myself, Councilwoman Seaman, and Councilwoman Alan Polensky. If any so designated or are able to attend, the Clerk's office will coordinate finding substitutes with the mayor. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Items Number 56 through 56D, 24-0486, on the following land use entitlement project request on 8.01 acres at the southwest corner of Evergreen Avenue and Decatur Boulevard. Item 56A, 24-04 --
I'm sorry to interrupt. It was 54.
Thank you very much. Yes, yes. As a matter of fact, I haven't highlighted it. I didn't use -- okay. Item Number 54, excuse the malfunction, 24-0640-VAR1, abeyance item, appeal item variance. Applicant owner, Harbor Cove Properties LLC, for possible action on an appeal of the approval by the Planning Commission on a land use entitlement project request to allow a proposed front yard wall that does not conform to Title 19.06 Development Standards for Height on 1.32 acres at 2980 Harbor Cove Drive, R-PD5 Residential Plan Development, five units per acre zone, Ward 4, Ms. Alan Polensky. The Planning Commission and staff recommend approval. This is a public hearing that I now declare open. Does the applicant wish to come forward?
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning, everyone. David Brown, 520 South Forest Street, on behalf of the applicant, HOA. We were here last month at the end of that meeting. You strongly encouraged us to work with the homeowner and try to reach a compromise. I think in a moment you'll hear from Mr. Harvey. He's completely unwilling to compromise in any way. I called him right after a few hours, let time cool down after the hearing. He said he wanted to think about everything. I called him back in two weeks. Again, he was still objecting to the fact that neighbors really didn't agree with it or that neighbors had actually called the City Councilwoman. We made what we believe is a very generous proposal. The HOA even offered to pay for the landscaping. Again, Mr. Harvey suggested that he didn't believe me, that that was not possible by the rules. I said, "That's a fair thing to request in writing," which isn't what he requested. But I said, "Why don't I get you a letter from the HOA providing it to you in writing?" We provided him a letter in writing that we were willing to work with him. He did go ahead and meet with someone regarding the landscaping plan. We were in agreement with it for the HOA, but Mr. Harvey said he didn't want any landscaping. He thought landscaping wouldn't, you know, surprisingly look good at that area. We made other suggestions that Mr. Harvey also didn't like. To date, I've not received a single suggestion from Mr. Harvey. I told him I'm open to present anything and everything he could possibly come up with to try to reach a compromise. I think, of course, the willingness of the HOA to actually pay for the landscaping in front, to prevent dogs from going in, to maintain his privacy, as we've always maintained. We don't believe it's about his privacy. We believe it's about increasing the size of his backyard. There have been over 50 neighbors, had signed a petition that they're against it. They've done everything they possibly can with Mr. Harvey. Happy to continue to talk to him, but, like I said, I don't think at this point it's very helpful. Happy to answer any questions. I'm not going to repeat everything from the first presentation unless anyone would like me to refresh it, but this is essentially a wall that he wants to move forward. The HOA is against it. We talked before that Mr. Harvey was able, through one board member that he has a relationship with, to get temporary approval, but there is no doubt, last time we presented a document from three of the four remaining board members that all signed a declaration, that they are against the wall and not supporting the wall, and he's had a cease and desist letter sent to him from the HOA lawyer as well. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. May I have a report from staff?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Seth Floyd for the record. Mayor, this is an appeal of the Planning Commission's approval of the requested variance. As previously presented at last council meeting, the subject site is an irregular-shaped lot that meets NRS requirements for the granting of a variance, and therefore, staff is recommending approval of the requested variance.
All right. Thank you very much. Is there anyone wishing to be heard on this item? Yes, please come to the podium and identify yourself.
Good evening, Mayor. Good morning, Mayor and council members. My name is Robert Crimmer. I live at 8109 Sunset Cove Drive. I'm a member of the HOA Harbor Cove HOA community and a homeowner. The applicant claims this variance is necessary to address a privacy hardship. The HOA has opposed this project because it clearly violates the CCNRs. The last city council meeting, the Councilwoman, thank you, suggested that the parties work and try to work something out. In good faith, the HOA responded despite no legal obligation to do so, and they offered to purchase and install privacy landscaping, including the irrigation system, at no cost to the applicant. He would only need to maintain it. As you just heard, he refused. That refusal suggests that his intent is not based on privacy, that it's based on a desire to expand his yard space as a matter of personal preference. And as you know, a variance should not be granted to promote mere personal preference. The HOA and the community have acted responsibly and in good faith. To date, 75 residents submitted written opposition statements. Many reached out directly to our Councilwoman. While the room tonight may not be full, we do have a number of residents here, but the public record is full, and the residents have used their formal channels to voice their concerns, and those voices matter. The HOA, as the elected representative of the community, formally opposed this project, spent considerable time and legal resources funded by homeowner dues to uphold the rules we all live by, and that's real opposition backed by principle and community investment. A key requirement for a variance is that it must be the least impactful solution. That standard's not met here. A less impactful cooperative solution, landscaping, was offered, and it was rejected. So I respectfully urge you to deny this variance. I just want to add one thing in response to staff, who works very hard on these matters and finds and reaches a conclusion based on the applicant's initial submittal. But in this case, what came out after the fact that staff wasn't aware of at the time they evaluated and submitted their staff report was additional factual information, for example, that the HOA had never approved this project, whereas the applicant represented in his application that they had. And the staff, for good reason, might rely on that to some extent. So for all those reasons, I would ask the council to really consider the totality of the circumstances here, well-stated by the attorney Brown, and deny this. Thank you for your time. I know I exceeded my two minutes. I apologize.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else wishing to be heard on this item? Please come forward and state your name.
My name is Larry Handel. I live on Horizon Lake Drive. Personally, I don't see a reason why to not deny this thing. My wall is identical to the one -- Oh, there we go. This is my wall. It's identical to the one Mr. Harvey wants to put up. This is the wall identical to what he wants to put up. So I don't see a reason why our board would want to waste our funds to defend this wall when it's his property. It's a fundamental right. If it's your land, if you're going to put something up that does not violate the community standards, which his proposal does not, I don't see a reason why it would be denied. It should be approved. The community says it meets all the standards, so just because a few ward members do not care for Mr. Harvey, there's no reason to proceed this way. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Oh, may -- sir, would you please come back to the podium?
Yes.
Councilwoman has a question to ask of you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Handel, just for clarity, I understand your picture where you have the wall that is adjacent to the curb. For clarity, you are either original owner or that wall was built when the home was built, correct?
When I purchased the home three years ago, it was already there.
And you can't speak to beforehand, but I presume that's --
Right. No, it's not a new wall.
Okay.
But there again, every entrance into our community going from, I guess, north to south has that wall, except for in front of the homes.
Right, but your same argument can be used, that this area hasn't been there for for 20 years. People have --
Well, it shouldn't have been that way to start with.
And we may argue about that.
And it's his property.
But -- oh, that I understand. Yes, sir. Okay. Just for clarity, I wanted to make sure that that was correct.
That's correct.
You made no movement of your wall.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak on this item? Yes, please come up to the podium and state your name.
Good morning. David Giudici. I was -- I've lived in the community for 20 years. Been on the board before, currently on the board. I was on the board when this hall came up. It started back in 2019 when they first -- he first tried to submit an ARC for this, and at the time, he did have, you know, a gate in the middle of the wall, and so we denied it. Fast forward to '24, he went in, resubmitted it without it, and everything looked appropriate. It was inconsistent with the community aesthetics, and we had no issues. The height of the wall was the same as everything else. The wall continues on along the path of the sidewalk. And the whole thing started was when the management company told him that he needs to clean up this area, and we all thought for 20 years that it was like common area. But turned out, then they sent him the property lines, and it turned out to be his property. So that's when -- that's what started this whole --
south has that wall, except for in front of the homes.
Right, but your same argument can be used, that this area hasn't been there for for 20 years. People have...
Well, it shouldn't have been that way to start with.
And we may argue about that.
And it's his property.
But... Oh, that I understand. Yes, sir. Okay. Just for clarity, I wanted to make sure that that was correct.
That's correct.
You made no movement of your wall.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak on this item? Yes, please come up to the podium and state your name.
Good morning. David Giudice. I was, I've lived in the community for 20 years. Been on the board before, currently on the board. I was on the board when this hall came up. It started back in 2019 when they first, he first tried to submit an ARC for this. And at the time, he did have a, you know, a gate in the middle of the wall. And so we denied it. Fast forward to '24, he went in, resubmitted it without it, and everything looked appropriate. It was inconsistent with the community aesthetics, and we had no issues. The height of the wall was the same as everything else. The wall continues on along the path of the sidewalk. And the whole thing started was when the management company told him that he needs to clean up this area. And we all thought for 20 years that it was like common area. But turned out then they sent him the property lines, and it turned out to be his property. So that's when, that's what started this whole thing. I've never had any issues with this. I have two homes in the community. One of them is kitty corner from his. Right across the street from my house, the wall is just straight up against the sidewalk. And then the other house I have that I live in is on the end of the, is at the end of the... Can you guys see this?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so it's at the end. This is my first house, and you can see the wall goes right up against the sidewalk. That's the aesthetics of the community. And then what happens, my house on the end of the community, you can see here from that view, the wall continues on the path of the sidewalk. That's the aesthetics of the community. There was one time where a board president wanted to put this wall up, which was eight foot tall, and that was apparently approved, and nobody knew about it, but nobody makes any qualms about it. So it really doesn't affect the look of the homes or the community. You know, I, let me see here. When this, when this all came about, I, I was the only person on the board. There's three board members, myself, Patrick Sampson, and Ken Peterson. And I was the only one that approved it. Patrick had a couple of questions to clarify. Those questions were answered. Ken never voted. Patrick never voted, but my vote was standing. So it is true, it was approved ARC. All you need was one vote from a board member if the other two abstain. I have a letter from Pat, from Ken Peterson, that he wanted me to read. And on that letter, it says, "My name is Ken Peterson. I've asked David Giudice to read this letter on my behalf." I was aboard, I was aboard of, I was on the board of HOA Community '24. At the time, the application was made for the construction of the boundary wall attached to property 28, 2980 Harbor Cove. "I agree to the construction project and still believe it will be more in keeping with the community than at present. On the review, as it was to be staggered opposed to present straight block wall, I feel it would appear to be easier on the eye and would lead to the frontage of the property better than what is, what is there present. Mr. Harvey approached me prior to making the application and asked if I thought there was any issues with moving forward with the application. I reviewed it and had no problems agreeing to it as present." This board that's on right now allowed Patrick Sampson to retroactively vote for that a year later. So I, you know, this, everything that's been going on, and then they, they decided to hire the lawyer, did not include me on it, text the property manager that, "Hey, listen, I'm going to meet this lawyer at this time and this day," and completely kept me out of loop. And when it asks on the email string, "Hey, how come nobody included me on this? Because I'm not, it's not my ARC. I am a board member," it was met with complete silence. It's, the board is what I've been dealing with, particularly board member for a long time. And I think they started, without even asking me my opinion, not once did they ever come up to me and say, "Hey, can you give me the particulars on this wall?" I mean, if somebody was interested in knowing and learning and making a concise and clear decision, they would ask the person who voted for the ARC. They would ask the person who, "Hey, what went through your mind?" But they never once asked that. They had no intention. They didn't care. There's a, there's a, there's a personality thing going on right now with the board. And as long as they have three, they got majority, they can railroad everything. And that's why we're here. But the point is too, is, the point is that we, we've made, we've made this very clear to them, that it's been approved. They're trying to overturn the ARC on their own accord. And then they go ahead and they take this word and they send misinformation to the homeowners. That's why they have 75 people on there. And they tell them it's going to be 12-foot tall, or they're going to say it has a gate in the middle that the original ARC had originally, or they say it's going to be butt up against a street. They said also that he's going to have multiple cars in front. He's going to be running a business in the back. You know, all of this is lies. And all it is is designed to get people all upset. And that's, that's the real problem here. This wall, you guys made a vote on it based on the restrictions of the city, the permits, all the laws and stuff. And that's the right decision. It, there's, they won't even notice that it's there. They, I guarantee you, there's plants there. They couldn't tell you how many plants and what plants are there. So, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And Councilwoman Seaman has a question, I believe.
Okay.
Well, I think you answered it. You said that it, that this was approved by the board, but the prior gentleman said it wasn't approved. So was it, so I guess what I'm seeing, this is an HOA issue.
Yeah.
And we're not a court of law.
No, you're not.
And I know there's an ombudsman that takes care of these things. And I feel like this is, I don't know why it's in front of us, is what I'm trying to say. I believe that HOAs are for a reason, that we all stay in compliance with it.
Right.
So I don't feel comfortable on voting for something that I don't feel is our purview. It's the, it's the HOA's decision. I don't know. That's kind of where I'm at.
You're exactly right. And NRED is being involved with this because you got the ADR and the other division investigator. So they will be involved with this because a lot of this stuff is going on that's wrong. And I know other board members in the different communities, and they're busy trying to lower the costs of this or that. They're trying to make it much more beautiful in terms of structure. All those things are positive contribute to a community. This is not a positive contribution to the community. This is pitting homeowner against homeowner, and it's just dramatizing things. We all got our own lives. This is a voluntary position, and I don't understand how they feel so vested that they have to do this and spend so much money. And on top of this lawyer behind me would get another 11 and a half thousand if he wins. That's the incentive. It's ridiculous.
Madam Mayor, let me be clear. Is this on appeal from...
Appeal from Planning Commission to serve the community.
Yeah, but I feel like I would be, I would, I wouldn't upheld what they did. I don't think we are part of this, is what I'm saying. I'm not agreeing with, with building it. I'm saying that, you know, it shouldn't be something that we decide anyway.
Absolutely.
And is there anybody else that wishes to speak?
I'm the actual, the first of the board with this.
All right. Please come to the podium and state your name.
Francis, do you want to talk?
Good morning, council members. Mayor Berkeley. My name is Anathia Smuckler, and I live at 3005 Harbor Cove Drive. I am here today as a concerned homeowner who recently attended my first HOA board meeting, and also as a board member for local charities, CCMSA Mayor that you're also a part of. And what I witnessed there was alarming enough that I felt compelled to speak. You've heard enough about the position, but I want to talk about how it became quickly clear during that meeting that this lawsuit has nothing to do with community standards or legal compliance. Instead, it reflects an ongoing campaign by the majority faction of our five-member board, a consistent three against two voting bloc, that has used its power not to govern in good faith, but to isolate, target, and harass the minority board members, including Mr. Harvey. These majority board members have spent significant community funds retaining outside legal counsel without board transparency or consensus, justifying the expense through a pattern of misrepresentation. While I was at the board meeting, small amounts like $200 and $400 were asked to be voted on, but I had to ask questions when they just kind of slipped in, "Oh, and just approve the legal expenses." And I was like, "What legal expenses? How much were they?" To find out that without notifying the community, without giving us any input, $15,000 was spent, but here we were approving 200. So I was asking about what oversight there was and asking about the different issues. And hearing the board members explain this was deeply, deeply concerning.
Can you state your position on this issue? Because we shouldn't be involved in HOA matters.
It should absolutely be approved. It should absolutely be approved. The majority of walls in that area are just like what Mr. Harvey is asking to build. Other walls in the past have been approved to be built similar to what Mr. Harvey is building. And I just wanted to add that the reason homeowners are upset is because other homeowners, including myself, were shown misinformation over what was to be built and told, sorry, I'm a little nervous. My throat is so dry. I was shown photos of large vehicles and told that those are Mr. Harvey's, and he's going to have a massive construction business, and he wants this huge wall put up. And they were City of Las Vegas vehicles. And when, so anyone who's upset about this, it's because the board members are pretending that it's something that it's not.
Thank you.
And I also did a rendering that I wanted to show you of what the, what the wall looks like, what it's going to look like, and also what I was sold at all.
Put it underneath and we can see it on the screen.
Okay.
Perfect.
So you can see, this is just a very slight change. This is not some extreme, extreme thing that needs to take up all of the council's time for something that already had a 7-0 approval. This is what was described to me by board members as what he wants to build. And all the other homeowners think that this is what is being built, which is why you're hearing people being so upset. But again, this is based, this is his current wall, and this is the rendering I created based on his submitted and approved plans.
Well, thank you so much. We appreciate it. Is there anybody else that would like to speak on this item? Please state your name.
Yeah, mine's Alan Harvey. Sorry, Alan Harvey, and it is my property. Question, has it been approved by the, by the board? Here actually states, Harbor Cove, the homeowners' association, this is taken from their smart web, it is in project approved status. I actually printed this before the last meeting, which is on May the 21st. Today, I took from the website printed here, June 18th, project waiting for completion. As far as the smart web and as far as the ARC application with the management company, it is approved. They are waiting for completion. So you are being given disingenuous information here. I don't know how else to word it. I've got a big speech there, but I think everybody said what they need to do, need to say. This was the document I had signed. These are all the neighbors that live opposite my property, who had no problem with the wall being built. This is the height of the wall now. And that's me just standing there. I'm not on my tiptoes. I can see clearly into my property. By moving the wall out towards the sidewalk, and I still want a 16-inch gap, that would be the height of the wall. So people would have to jump up to see over. I don't want to raise the height of the wall. I just want to move it out to actually this position here. Okay? People were led to believe it was going to be similar to the wall on Sun Lake Drive, which is 11 feet high. They weren't told it was going to be the same as that, but it would be similar to. So I believe they were misled in that information. That, as Thea did these renderings for me, that's a photograph of the wall as it stands, and she showed, that is now the rendering of what it will look like. It still has a 16-inch gap there. This is a photograph of the front of my property as it stands. When the wall is built, it will not alter in any way, shape, or form. The wall moving doesn't change the frontage of my property at all. This is where my property sits within the community. It is one of the largest lots on the community. The main antagonists of this live in this area here, about as far away from my property as what you can get. I just can't, I don't know why the lies have been told. You see, it is approved by the, it's actually been approved by the master community. Staff approved it 7-0, so I don't know why we are here. And I'd just like to read the last statement. I read it the last meeting, and hopefully this carries. "With respect to Mr. Bray and Mr. Brown, attorneys for the HOA, I believe there is no basis for the HOA's appeal, and nothing new has been presented, and there has been no new change in circumstances since the last hearing, when the council approved the variance as recommended by staff 7-0. I respectfully request that the council uphold the variance as recommended by staff and unanimously granted by the Planning Commission. And if the HOA wants to now continue to challenge my original ARC application and its approval from over one year ago, for whatever reason, it will be a civil matter and decided in a court, not in front of this council." I did speak with Mr. Brown with regards to doing plants in front. Because you asked me to, I did. I actually went to Moon Nurseries. They did a rendering. And I didn't really like it. And I just want to read this very, very, very last statement. "After consideration, my wife and I agree. We've made our residence virtually maintenance-free, and adding many plants and vines would be a drain not only on our time and resources, but the amount of additional watering. And in the present climate, we didn't feel it was a responsible way forward after given the water shortages." But there's hardly any difference between where the wall is now and moving it forward. I cannot understand, other than personalities, why this is actually in the state it is.
Thank you, Mr. Harvey. Are there any questions or comments from members of the council?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. So a city attorney, if I vote yes, no, I'm saying when, if you, we have an appeal here. So I believe this isn't in the purview of the council at all in the city. So could you clarify what, what I would do on a...
Thank you, Mayor, with your discretion. Jeff Dorkak, City Attorney, for the record. This item, as we heard last month, this is an HOA item that is properly in front of the city council. City law still trumps HOA CCNRs in HOA communities. At the end of the day, an HOA can have its CCNRs, but they cannot contradict what city laws state. With this particular item, the homeowner, Mr. Harvey, if I have it correct,
Yes.
had to come to the city to get a variance with respect to our development standards as to height for the wall. That's all he's here for. The height of the wall is higher than we would usually allow, I believe, and therefore, the variance was required. And that was approved with a recommendation by the Planning Commission. And I say recommendation because ultimately, it could be appealed, which it was by the HOA. Today, Councilwoman Seaman, because it's an appeal from the HOA, if you approve the HOA appeal, you are denying the variance approval. So if you grant the appeal, the variance is taken away from the property owner. If you deny the appeal, everything stays as it did from Planning Commission. I've mentioned to the councilwoman for the ward, Councilwoman Ellen Polanski, at the end of the day, and I think this was stated by both parties, the property owner and the HOA attorney, leaving things status quo or even a deny, or a grant of the appeal, which would ultimately take away the variance approval, there is still going to be a day that comes where the CCNRs and the private dispute between the HOA and the property owner come back, no matter what. So there's parallel courses going on here. All we're here to do is our proper review of the height with respect to our development standards, and that's what's before you. And again, the Planning Commission has previously approved, and staff recommended for approval based on its analysis of the variance standards. So I hope that helps.
Thank you. I have one more question for the HOA. Are there other properties with that fence height in the neighborhood?
They are, but they're not of, that's technically the sidewall. So there are other people for their back wall that have it. But there are, to be fair, there are other walls that are of that height.
In the front.
But not in the front. And the way Mr. Harvey's house is situated, it's unique, but really, the backyard faces, the side of it faces the front. It's all, I don't know if you have the picture to show. It's all horizontal. So his, right where he showed the picture of his front yard, his backyard is right next to it on the, to the left.
So it would be not harmonious to the rest of the neighborhood, is what you're saying?
No, it is harmonious.
We will agree to disagree on that.
David, can you bring your pictures, please?
Okay. I think we get the point.
Along the whole of, along the whole of Harbor Cove is the wall exactly the same height as what I want to do it.
There's a lot of people that have their backyard. This is my old house right here.
You can probably do it on that one.
No, where is it? No, over here. No, over here.
Okay.
So this is my old house I had right here, and this is my backyard. Mr. Brown doesn't really know this community, I've been here for 20 years.
I've driven the entire community, I could say.
Gentlemen, no need to argue amongst yourselves.
Yeah, I'm not, so it is harmonious with it. If you look at that one, and if you also look at this other picture that I have, it's all in line, right here, it's very clear. This is their front, this is the front of their house, this is the side, this is their backyard, this is the other person's backyard, 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 this all goes along the backyard.
This is Harbor Cove.
Same thing on this, it all goes in line, so it's pretty much harmonious.
I would like to clarify that I just took photos of this a few days ago, which I'm trying to find on my phone, exactly where his wall is, the same height, is all the other houses completely in line. What they're saying is that because his is on the corner, that it's technically the side of his house and not the back of his house, but it's because he's on a corner.
I get it.
But the whole line is exactly the same with the fence.
Thank you so much. Is there anyone else on the council that wishes to make a statement, or make a, ask a question? Before you make a motion, city attorney, let me punctuate what Councilwoman Seaman asked. If we vote yes, he builds his fence, if he, if we vote, okay, so would you explain that for all of us?
The HOA is appealing an approval to build his fence, so if you grant the appeal, he cannot build his, he doesn't have the city approval at least, and he wouldn't be able to build his fence. So it's an appeal from the HOA, so if you agree with the HOA's view, you're going to grant the appeal. If you agree with the property owner, you're going to deny the appeal.
Thank you very much. Is everybody on board with that?
Yes.
Okay.
I think so.
And, Ms. Councilwoman Polensky, do you have a comment, and if not, will you make a motion?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Maybe I changed my mind about running for office.
We sincerely hope not.
If Mr. Harvey could clarify, when you came 30 days ago, I said, this is our purview, but I want nothing to do with the HOA thing.
Yep.
I want you to go in a room, lock yourselves up, and negotiate, and come out with some sort of agreement. Did you meet in person?
We did not meet in person, it was all over the phone. The gentleman phoned me up the evening of the appeal, and I said, well, I need time to think about this. We had a HOA meeting that night, and my wall was discussed in great length during that meeting, and that's where the feelings came out that, and I found out that people were misled to say there's going to be gates in there, people misled to say that it's going to be higher than what it is. Yes, the variance is about the height, but actually, the true height is not changing. I'm bringing that wall height forward, but because my land is on a gradient, it appears higher when it comes towards the sidewalk. Now, I'm not a tall person, this man is an awful lot taller than I am. He would be able to see over the wall, but I couldn't, and the majority of people wouldn't be able to see without on tiptoes and over. I don't want to build it any higher, I just want to bring it out to stop the majority of people. There is actually somebody here in this auditorium that was looking over my wall a couple of years ago, and my wife told him, what are you doing? Oh, I like the lights in your backyard, I want to...
Thank you, Mr. Harvey.
Sorry.
I intended for you two to meet, and to sit in a room and hash out some sort of agreement, that did not take place. I would be willing to ask the mayor to trail this item until the end of the meeting, if you two want to go in the back room or on the side and to negotiate in earnest, but I don't want to continue to hear five people in favor, 75 opposed, and the notion that you made, or somebody made earlier, that you don't think 75 people called me, they all called, they all wrote.
No, 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 I never said that, I just believed that they were misled.
It puts me in a terrible position. I want you to negotiate, negotiations haven't happened, would you like me to trail, would you like the mayor to trail the item, and you guys talk?
We can...
Otherwise, I plan to, let me add this, I plan to make a motion to approve the appeal, so you need to negotiate.
Okay. I don't want to put plants there, I'm going to go with whatever you feel, seriously. I don't, because there's no way I want to put plants in, I don't want to spend time, if I don't get the wall, I don't get the wall.
Well, go negotiate.
Okay, we can talk, all right.
Madam Mayor, can we trail?
We will trail, I'm not sure it's going to do any good, but until the meeting, not beyond, not beyond this meeting.
Of course.
All right, thank you so much. We'll now move to item 56. 24-0486 on the following land use entitlement project request on 8.01 acres at the southwest corner of Evergreen Avenue and Decatur Boulevard. 56A, 24-0486-ZON1, from C1 Limited Commercial to C2 General Commercial. 56B, 24-0486-VAR1, to allow 461 parking spaces where 475 spaces are required. 56C, 24-0486-SUP1, for a proposed mixed-use development. And item 56D, 24-0486-SDR1, for a proposed three-story mixed-use development consisting of 293 residential units and 8,429 square feet of commercial area with waivers of building orientation standards and the perimeter landscape buffer requirements. The applicant is Four Green Development LLC, et al., and the owner is Arizona Charlies LLC. The planning commission recommends approval on the entire land use entitlement project. S F recommends approval on 24-0486-ZON1, and denial on 24-0486-VAR1, SUP1 and SDR1. These are in Ward 1. Mr. Knutson, in our public hearings, which I now declare open, is the applicant present?
Yes, good morning, Mayor, Council Liz Olson, 1980, Festival Plaza Drive, here on behalf of the applicant for development. Just to situate you to the site here, we are eight acres, currently split zoned C2 and C1. We're located on the corner of Decatur and Evergreen. To the north of us is the existing Arizona Charlies, and we are surrounded to the west and to the south by existing multifamily, as well as commercially zoned property. We are requesting a zone change to C2 over the entirety of the property to allow for a mixed-use development. If you know Four, they have developed some really great properties throughout southern Nevada, looking forward to bringing a little bit more life to this particular property. It's a great infill piece of property for a true vertical mixed-use development. On our site plan, you can see here, we have two separate RAP buildings. Our mixed-use commercial would be located along Decatur. We worked with your planning commission and your staff to revise the plans that you see here before you. Our original plan had our building along Decatur pushed back quite a bit, we had about four or five rows of parking along Decatur. To improve the walkability along Decatur, we've shifted that building as close as we could to Decatur, we only have one row of parking there now for our retail folks. But again, it's that true mixed-use development with the commercial integrated into the residential. 293 units, one and two bedroom, we're looking to do three stories, maximum height of 40 feet, as you can see here. As I mentioned, the property is currently owned by Arizona Charlies. It's actually being utilized right now, just as some additional parking for Arizona Charlies. There's been some concern mentioned by, at the planning commission, for the folks up to the north, just to the north of Arizona Charlies, just some potential concerns about parking for future events, or some circulation traffic through the site. While this is a separate piece of property, and not our, actually, our property for the development, I do just want to put on the record that Arizona Charlies is understanding and wants to be a good neighbor, so they're more than happy to look at potential signage or directional information on the site here for future events, to make sure folks are parking where they're supposed to be, and not cutting through the property. So, we're definitely happy to look at that. But otherwise, we appreciate staff's time on this, and planning commission's approval, and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much. May we have a staff report, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Pierre Loenstein, for the record. Regarding the proposed rezoning request, the C2 district is consistent with the site's TOD, which is Transit Orient Development High, land use designation on the general plan, which will allow for the redevelopment of the subject site, therefore, staff recommends approval of the rezoning of the subject site. However, the overall development plan is located within a transit-oriented land use corridor, as it is a large, underutilized parcel able to foster redevelopment that would support mass transit by activating the pedestrian realm. While the applicant has made notable attempt to bring the mixed-use development building frontage closer to Decatur Boulevard, staff finds the proposed mixed-use development provides an auto-centric design by placing a, right away, placing a row of parking adjacent to Decatur Boulevard, where the building frontage that contains first-floor retail should front Decatur Boulevard to activate, activate the pedestrian realm. Due to the proposed design of the development not supporting the goals of the transit-oriented corridor, or the objectives of the 2050 master plan, staff is recommending denial of the variance, especially used permanent in the site development plan review. Thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone else wishing to be heard on this item? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearings. Does the applicant agree with the conditions that have been suggested?
Yes, we do, thank you.
All right, are there any questions or comments from the council members? In that case, is there a motion? Mayor Pro Tem Knutson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to compliment the applicant, or at least the landowner, Golden Gaming, because a couple of years ago, with their request to build more housing in southern Nevada, I went to Golden Gaming and asked them to come up with a plan for this particular site, and they have done that. So I appreciate Golden Gaming and Arizona Charlies. And, Ms. Olson, we had talked about the potential for traffic conflicts, and while I won't make it a condition, your willingness to ask your client to put a signage along Evergreen on the north end there, so that people are aware that it'll create some traffic issues, I appreciate the consideration of your, of your client. And I just would like to say that we don't have a whole lot of HOAs in Ward 1, so if you're willing to move to Ward 1, it's great here, we don't fight over stuff. With that, I'm going to move to approve items 56, A, B, C, and D. Thank you very much.
All right. Please vote. Oops, one second. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Yes, they are. Do you, Ms. Polensky, would you like to hear the result of their negotiations?
Okay.
We can do it now. All right, welcome back.
Hello.
Thank you.
Yes, we did talk, sorry.
Unfortunately, Madam Mayor, you are correct, there's been no progress. Mr. Harvey is not willing to make any compromise of any kind.
The suggestion of moving the wall forward three feet just now, I said, well, unfortunately, by moving it forward three feet, that would then take the roots out of lovely existing trees. By moving it five feet, takes...
I also suggested, based on his picture, I would go to the board and ask if we could simply raise the wall by the eight inches for his privacy issue, again, he was not interested in that.
Privacy, yes, that would address, but it still doesn't people, stop people throwing all the trash down on the, on the, on the frontage there, which is what I got the original violation for.
Okay, we appreciate your great spirit, but I think we will, I'll now entertain the motion, Ms. Polensky.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. In the light of no actual negotiation, I'm going to make a motion to approve the appeal.
So I vote yes. No, I mean, I mean, if I want to approve the...
The motion on the floor is to approve the HOA's appeal, it's for the HOA.
Okay. Please vote. The motion passes.
Okay. Thank you very much. So no wall to be built, thank you.
Agenda item 58. 25-0027 on the following land use entitlement project request on 2.08 acres on the northeast corner of Donald Road and Leon Avenue. 58A, 25-0027-ZON1, from RE Residence Estates to R1 Single Family Residential. 58B, 25-0027-TMP1, Donald and Leon, for a proposed 10-lot single-family residential subdivision. The applicant is Summit Homes of Nevada LLC, and the owner is Brer Rabbit LLC. The planning commission and staff recommend approval on the entire land use entitlement project. These are in Ward 6. Councilwoman Bruni, and our public hearings, which I now declare open, is the applicant present?
Good morning, Robert Cunningham, 6D30, South Jones Boulevard, with Tany Engineering, representing the applicant. Would you like me to give my presentation?
Would you like to tell us about your project?
Certainly, I didn't know if the staff report was first.
This would be a good time.
Perfect, okay. Our project is located at the corner of Donald and Leon, it's approximately two acres in size right here. It's surrounded by development on all four sides of our property. What we're asking for is to rezone this property to R1, which is a conforming zoning that allows up to 10 units on our property. We're currently not asking for that. This project is started with a site plan here that had 10 lots on it. We went through and held a neighborhood meeting, even though it wasn't required of us, we've had multiple back and forths with the planning commission on this, and we changed our plan from the proposed 10 lots to a plan that has eight lots, which now staff is supporting. So our eight-lot project here, the following changes were made as a result of holding the neighborhood meeting, meeting with the planning commissioner, and getting approval at the planning commission. So, we now have eight lots, as I indicated. Our entrance had changed from being on the South Street to being on the West Street. The onsite street was changed from a 40-foot private street to a 48-foot wide public street, um, 49-foot wide public street. The onsite street changed from a termination of a hammerhead-style end to a cul-de-sac-style end. The connectivity ratio changed, we have a pedestrian pass-through here, and a drainage and sewer easement here where the residents here can walk back and around the property. The connect, the proposed changes in the variance that we previously had asked for have been withdrawn. The previous requested landscape buffer waiver has been required, that we asked for before has been removed. We have agreed to additional conditions of all single-story homes on this development, and we have asked or agreed to put larger trees planted in the landscape area along the side of the street here. We, at the planning commission, there was a condition to plant these trees as 36-inch box trees, and dealing with the developer, we'd like to see if that could be amended at all, or discuss possibility of being amended to indicate large trees, as indicated in the Southern Nevada Water Authority Regional Planning Coalition plant list, to be large trees that are fast-growing with 3-inch caliper. We believe that that meets the same intent instead of the 36-inch box trees, and actually starts off the trees at a lot larger size than just the same 36-inch box. Staff is recommending approval of all of our items. There may be some neighbors in support or opposition here today, and I'd be happy to address any concerns they have after the presentation's over. Thank you.
Thank you very much. May I have a staff report?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Pierre Loenstein, for the record. As Mr. Cunningham had indicated, risions received on April 23rd had reduced the original proposed residential development of 10 lots to eight, and the ingress egress changed from Donald Road to Leon Avenue. The street was changed from 40-foot wide private street to a 49-foot wide public street with standard cul-de-sac terminus. This has resulted in the original application for a variance being stricken at planning commission, and is no longer necessary, and the landscape buffer waiver request has also been eliminated as the six-foot wide buffers are now provided. Staff finds the rezoning request is in conformance with the general plan designation of the low-density residential, and the proposed tentative map meets the requirements set forth in Title 19 in NRS. Therefore, staff is recommending approval of both applications. If a recommendation, or if a motion for approval in regards to the language that was brought forward for landscaping, I do have a proposed condition for that landscaping, and I believe Public Works also has potential amended conditions. If, if you'd like, I'd read the landscaping condition... condition now and pass it over to Lucian after I finish that. So, the new condition would read, or sorry, and the amended condition B on the tentative map would read, "All landscape buffer trees on Donald Road shall have a minimum of 3-inch caliber diameter, comma, measured 6 inches from above soil line." And with that, I'll pass it over to Lucian for Public Works for any added or amended conditions. Thank you.
Lucian Pyatt, Public Works. Again, if the council's inclined to approve this, we'd like to amend condition number five to reconstruct standard hash-street improvements, including appropriate transition and overpaving on Leon Avenue adjacent to this site concurrent with the development of this site. Donald Road shall be constructed per standard 244.10 for rural improvements. All street lighting is hereby deferred. In accordance with Title 1902-025.F, the applicant shall make an improvement contribution equal to 50% of the city's bond estimate costs for all deferred improvements on Donald Road, Leon Avenue, and the public cul-de-sac unless the variance is approved to reduce this amount. Extend all required underground utilities such as electrical, telephone, et cetera located within the public rights-of-way past the boundaries of the site prior to the construction of hard-surfacing, asphalt, or concrete. All existing pavement, paving damaged or removed by this development shall be restored to its original location and to its original width concurrent with the development of this site. And then an added condition, so a new condition, sign a covenant running with land agreement for possible future installation of hash-street improvements per urban standards, including curb and gutter, sidewalk, street lighting, permanent per, pavement, permanent paving, and possible fire hydrants and sewers. On Donald Road, Leon Avenue, and the public cul-de-sac for the site, the covenant agreement must be recorded with the county recorder, and a copy of the recorded document must be provided to the city prior to the issuance of permits or the recordation of the final map for the site, whichever may occur first. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else wishing to be heard on this item? Seeing nobody, I will close the public meetings. Does the applicant agree to all of the conditions?
Yes, we agree to the conditions that were read in by staff as well.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions or comments by council members? Seeing none, is there a motion, Councilwoman Bruni?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to first start by thanking Summit Homes. I know we, the city as a whole is running out of land, and I think Ward 6, we have a lot of infill parcels. I think doing business in Ward 6 is a little, even sort of more challenging, because a lot of those infill parcels are next to horse properties, and so it makes doing, you know, coming in a little more challenging. I will assure you guys have done a great job working with the neighbors. We went from lots of opposition to no one showing up today, and so I think you have won over most of the neighbors with the compromises and the, the way that you've organized the, the property. So, thank you for that. And with that, I will make a motion to approve item 59-25-0067, items A, B, C, and D. Please.
Oh, no. Your item 58.
Sorry, 58. Gosh, A and B.
Thank you very much. Shall we vote? Please post. Motion passes. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Have a great day.
I'm going to turn the meeting over for item 58 to Mayor Pro Tem Knutson.
60.
59.
59.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Held in abeyance. Oh, dear.
The one that was held in abeyance.
Yes, yes, yes.
We'll figure it out.
Okay, I'll be right there.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Item 60-25-0110. This is a public hearing. The applicant is Jackson Hotel LLC. Owner is Jackson Hotel LV LLC et al. For possible action on the following land use entitlement project request on .97 acres at the northwest corner of Jackson Avenue and F Street. This is Ward 5 with Councilwoman Summers Armstrong. The planning commission voted 5 to 1 to 0, and staff recommended denial on the entire land use entitlement project. Okay, I'm going to read for a minute. Just give me a second. 60A, 25-0110-ZON1, rezoning from T4 to MS, T4 Main Street to T5 Main Street. 60B, 25-0110-VAR1, variance to allow 24 stories where seven stories is the maximum allowed. 60C, 25-0110-SUP1, special use permit for a proposed 360-foot, 361-foot tall building within the 140-foot airport overlay district. 60D, 25-0110-SUP2, special use permit for a proposed 548-square-foot massage establishment use, with waivers to allow a 99-foot distance separation from a church house of worship, 187-foot distance separation from a city park, and a 244-foot distance separation from a partial zone for residential use where 400 feet is required. 60E, 25-0110-VAC1, vacation petition to vacate a public alleyway south of Van Buren Avenue between F Street and G Street. 60F, 25-0110-SGR1, site development plan review for a proposed 24-story mixed-use development consisting of 60 multifamily residential units and 207 hotel rooms with waivers of the Title 19.09 Form-Based Code Development Standards. And I'm going to read 61 into the record as well. That's 25-0111, public hearing. Applicant is Westside Residence LV LLC. Owner, The House of God, which is the church of the living God, the pillar and ground of the truth without controversy, Incorporated et al. For possible action on the land use entitlement project request on .98 acres at the southeast corner of Van Buren Avenue and G Street, Ward 5 with Councilwoman Summers Armstrong, the planning commission on a 5-1-0 vote, and staff recommend denial on the entire land use project, entitled, excuse me, entire land use entitlement project. 61A is 25-0111-ZON1, rezoning from T4 Neighborhood to T5 Main Street. 61B is 25-0111, variance to allow 21 stories where seven stories is the maximum allowed. 61C, 25-0111-SUP1, a special use permit for a proposed 342-foot tall building within the 140-foot airport overlay district. And 61D, 25-0111-SGR1, site development plan review for a proposed 21-story mixed-use development consisting of 256 multifamily residential units and 1,752 square feet of commercial space with waivers of the Title 19.09 Form-Based Code Development Standards. Ms. Jackie, did I get that right? Okay. 60 and 61. I'm going to invite the applicants to come up and give your presentation, and then I'll turn it over to staff. Is that okay? Okay. Come on up. Speak your name for the record, and go for it.
Thank you. Good morning. Mohamed Ikbal here with Shlomo Mary, Joe Cato, and Kevin Thistle for applicants on items 60 and 61.
And before you get started, this is a public hearing, and after you get started and the staff give their presentation, will it open up to the public? So, thank you.
Sounds good. Thank you. My opening will be less than two minutes. We're really appreciative of your time and diligence with a lengthy agenda here this morning. Sammy Davis Jr., Nat King Cole, Cab Callaway, and many others performed on a single night in December 1955 at an NAACP event at the Town Tavern, the property at issue here with items 60 and 61. To quote a vintage Las Vegas article by Clinton Wright, "After the closure of the Moulin Rouge in 1955, the tavern became the main West Side destination for black performers who were headlining the segregated strip hotels." Now, recent history, the last few decades, have not been kind to the tavern, or frankly, the original West Side of Las Vegas. But let us honor its significance and that history, and let us support the development efforts here today for its future, a future that seeks to develop the tavern and usher in prosperity anew for the original West Side of Las Vegas. I will now hand it over to Joe, and after Joe and Kevin, I'll briefly address the gaming license. Thank you.
You want me to go before you?
No, Kevin, go.
Kevin.
I'll go.
My stage remains for the record.
Yes. My name is Kevin Thistle. I'm the architect here on behalf of the project. Madam Mayor, City Council, I'm going to take a few minutes and talk a little bit about the history of the project and go over the details of the project, if that's okay. The project, as they said, is located at the corner of Jackson and F Street in the historic West Side. The existing, the existing parcel contains six parcels of land between Jackson Avenue, F Street, Van Buren on the north, and G Street on the west. We're preparing, we're planning to consolidate the lots into two lots from the six that are there now. A north parcel here along Van Buren Avenue and the south parcel on Jackson Avenue here. This property is very unique and has a very unique history. In 1955, a man by the name of Earl Turman opened the Newtown Tavern. At that time, at that time, as I've talked to many of the neighbors in the neighborhood, especially some of those who've been there for many years, it was a very exciting place. There was a lot of energy and activity at that, at that location. As was stated, that has not happened there for quite some time. Fifteen years ago, the owner, Mr. Murray, was able to purchase the property located at 600 Jackson Avenue. This avenue, this Jackson Avenue site is very unique. The Newtown Tavern was located right on the corner of Jackson and F Street. It consisted of two parcels, 600 Jackson and the parcel next door. It included a casino, a restaurant, and a showroom. Two and a half years ago, Mr. Murray was able to purchase the remainder of the property on the entire block, which is what we're proposing to you today. When Mr. Murray purchased the project, purchased the property, it was under the City of Las Vegas Unified Development Code, and it was Zoned C2. This is the map that indicated that zoning at that time. This is the property that we're talking about today. The parcels shown in red are showing, shown C2 parcels. Those C2 parcels at that time were able to have any type of commercial development on it, including the casino, hotels, and there was no height limitation at that time. October 19th in 2018, the City of Las Vegas adopted the Form-Based Code. This is a map showing the districts of the new Form-Based Code, and this is the location of the subject property. Mr. Murray's property was changed, zoning was changed from C2 to T4N on the north parcel and T4MS on the south parcel. When that occurred, it restricted the height of the property from unlimited to a maximum of seven stories. As was stated earlier, we are here today to ask for a special use permit to allow a higher building than what is currently This site has another thing that makes it very unique among all the properties in the historic West Side, and that is, it carries with it a grandfather non-restrictive gaming use. Why is that important? There are only two properties in the historic West Side that carry that non-restrictive gaming use grandfather, and that's the 600 Jackson site and the Moulin Rouge site. That's important, because if you were to want to build a casino anyplace in the historic West Side, it would virtually be impossible nowadays, because there is a state law that says you must have a 1,500-foot separation between a casino and a church or a school. There are very many churches in the historic West Side, so getting that separation would be impossible. There's also a regulation in the state, you cannot ask for a waiver or a variance for that separation. That makes this property very unique. When the Form-Based Code was adopted, Mr. Murray's property, as I said, was changed from C2 to T4N and T4MS. However, the Moulin Rouge site was granted a different zoning. It was granted a T5C zoning, which is a level above ours. With the new Form-Based Code, you're only allowed to ask for a change of zoning up one level from where you're at. So, that's what we're doing today. We're asking for a level one above the zoning district that we're in, and that only allows us to do seven stories. So, that's why we have to have a special use permit to go higher than that. The Moulin Rouge site with the T5C zoning, if they were to ask for the next higher zoning, they would be allowed to build up to 20 stories. In the year 2016, the City of Las Vegas, along with UNOV, worked with the stakeholders in the historic West Side to develop a plan to revitalize the historic West Side. This plan is known as the Hundred Plan. That Hundred Plan is referenced in the staff report several times. The Hundred Plan recommended eight big moves to revitalize the historic West Side. The first of those big moves was to revitalize Jackson Street to build a catalyst project on Jackson Avenue, either at F Street or D Street, that will bring back neighborhood activity and a local economy back to Jackson Avenue. Since the corner of Jackson and D Street does not have a non-restrictive gaming license with it, and the 600 Jackson site does, it makes it the most appropriate place to locate a casino and hotel. The second recommendation from the Hundred Plan was to build a project that would be a landmark destination. We propose that this project would not only be a catalyst project for not only Jackson Avenue to generate new business and activities, but also serve as an anchor for future investments on Jackson Avenue and the historic West Side. The Hundred Plan's next recommendation was to make the most of opportunities for infill projects and add new and diverse housing types. The existing site does not have any residents located on it at this time, so there will be no families that would need to be relocated because of the results of this project. Also, with regard to new, providing new and diverse housing types, we are proposing 60 condominium units and 336 apartment units. The Hundred Plan recommended building a boutique hotel. We're proposing a boutique hotel with 207 rooms. The Hundred Plan recommended building a mixed-use building. We're proposing a mixed-use building, which has a casino, theater, restaurants, retail space, convention space, apartments, condominiums, a truly mixed-use building. The Hundred Plan recommended providing multifamily residential buildings. Again, we're providing, proposing 336 apartments and 60 condominium units. The Hundred Plan recommended building neighborhood coffee shops. We're proposing a neighborhood coffee shop on the corner of F Street and Van Buren Avenue. The Hundred Plan recommended building small music venues. We're proposing an 838-seat performing arts cultural venue that will host community programming, live music, and cultural celebrations. We're also proposing a 7,000-square-foot nightclub. And lastly, the Hundred Plan recommended providing a public parking facility. We're proposing an eight-level, 479-space parking garage with 100 electric charging stations. I just want to take a second and clarify something that was written in the staff report that could be misconstrued. The staff report indicates a waiver of zero parking spaces where 135 spaces are required. While technically, while technically correct, the actual parking situation is that all the parking spaces that are required are being provided for this project, and that amounts to 439 spaces. They just happen to be located on the north parcel and not on the south parcel. So, technically, the waiver is necessary because there are no parking spaces, and we have divided this into two separate applications. But we are providing the required parking for the whole project. But we are providing the required parking for the whole project. I'm going to talk for a moment about what's going on with the south parcel, the Jackson Hotel parcel. Our driveway is entering off of Jackson Avenue and exiting onto G Street. The hotel lobby with the portico chair is in this area here. Adjacent to that is a 5200-square-foot restaurant, which leads to the 7,000-square-foot casino. Within that casino, we have something called Earl's Tavern, which is a tribute to Earl Turman, who opened the original Newtown Tavern. The project also includes the following amenities. As I said, we're proposing an 838-seat performing arts theater, 8,000-square-foot wedding and banquet facility, 10,500-square-foot food court, 25,000 square feet of convention space, 7,000 square foot of beauty salon and barber shop, 7,000-square-foot wellness-focused gym with 548-square-foot massage area, 7,000-square-foot nightclub with views of the Las Vegas skyline, a rooftop-level pool, 207 hotel rooms, and 60 condominium units. The access to the casino is, as I said, through the hotel lobby or from the corner of F Street and Jackson and off of F Street. I'm now going to talk for a moment about the north parcel or the Van Buren parcel. This is the parcel where the West Side Residence is located. The West Side Residence has its own elevator lobby on the corner of Van Buren and G Street here. It has an eight-level parking garage in this area here. The coffee shop is located on the corner here of F Street and Van Buren. For services for the building, they're entering off of F Street and exiting onto G Street. All the services for deliveries, trash, is in the middle of the building and screened from all the adjacent parcels because it's in the middle of the project. This is a view of the building from Van Buren, with Van Buren being here and G Street here. This area is where the performing arts theater is. This is the parking garage entrance. This is the entrance for the apartment lobby. This is where we have the eight-level parking garage, and above that is where the 336 apartment units are located. The 336 apartment units consist of 21 studio apartments, 168 one-bedroom units, and 147 two-bedroom units. It also has a rooftop deck pool on top of the building. The overall project is being designed as a high-efficiency climate-responsive project in compliance with LEED Silver Rating, which will exceed the current Energy Code requirements. We're using high-performance glazing to reduce heat gain, continuous insulation for better envelope performance, and smart mechanical systems like VRF HVAC systems with energy recovery and to lower overall energy use. We're also using, excuse me. We're also using LED lighting with occupancy sensors, daylight controls, to further reduce demand throughout the hotel, condos, apartments, and casino and other theater areas. We're also integrating low-flow water fixtures, efficient pool systems, and providing rooftop solar systems. All the systems are being modeled to provide significant savings over ASHRAE 90.1 baselines. This project will be a sustainable, energy-conscious asset to the City of Las Vegas. In conclusion, before I do that, this is a rendering of the building from the Jackson Street side, with Jackson Street being here, F Street being here. This is where the proposed theater is, the casino down on the ground floor here, hotel lobby here. This is where we have the convention space, the 207 hotel rooms are here, 60 condominium units are here, and the apartments back here and the parking garage on the Van Buren Street side. In conclusion, we believe that this project will be the catalyst for the revitalization of Jackson Avenue and help to restore the economic and cultural vitality to the historic West Side. After holding several meetings with the community and listening to the residents in the neighborhood, it is our belief that the historic West Side community is in great need of a project like this that will indeed revitalize the historic West Side. We've been contacted by several local businesses in this community that are not only interested, but looking forward to being an integral part of this project. We believe that this project will be a landmark destination for those people seeking a unique Las Vegas experience. This project will produce hundreds of construction jobs and permanent positions in hospitality, retail, and cultural spaces. The owner is committed to local hiring, job training, and contractor inclusion, especially from work five. The owner is not just seeking approval for this project, but a partnership with the historic West Side community. This project isn't just about a building. It's about recognizing the historic West Side as a place worthy of bold ideas, safe design, and inclusive opportunity. We believe that this plan reflects your leadership vision for the future of Las Vegas and stands ready to move forward with your continued guidance. Thank you. I need to mention one other thing. There's been a question with regards to the height of the building. We have filed an application with the FAA and received preliminary approval for a building 479 feet tall, and we are proposing a building 351 feet tall. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning, Mayor, City Council. My name is Jo Kato on behalf of the project. I am here to represent the project today, bringing possibility and persistence and partnership. Mr. Murray started on this journey 10 years ago, 11 years ago or so, going through the application process, the designing process, gaming process, and over that time, we're here today. So my role with my colleagues today is to give the story as to why I'm asking the City Council to approve this project. I promise, I have a lot of papers, but I'm saving the trees. So we had submitted it to staff, so it's my hope that it was in your backup packet. If not, it was submitted as Dropbox as well. So you'll have the opportunity to look at it. If you haven't, then I'll just go through it. The Jackson Street project is an economic development project for the historic West Las Vegas. It's been long coming. It's aligned with the 100 Plan, and I believe this could be an anchor for the community. For too long, the community has seen projects come in and nothing goes into fruition. I strongly believe this is the project that can help to start the revitalization of Las Vegas, of West Las Vegas. When we talk about the hotel, we talk about the amenities. We talk about the bringing in tourism into the area. That can also help the small businesses that are already there that are struggling. It gives employment. It gives apprenticeship training. It helps with economic development overall for the project. We look at the tourism driver to say, right now in West Las Vegas, we have a beautiful Martin Luther King. We have fast-food restaurants on Lake Mead. But the possibility of putting in a boutique hotel in an area that once thrived in the community is a re-vigoration of that community. We propose, after the build-out, that we will work tediously to get tourism dollars in that area because it's a hotel with the amenities. During this process of working on this project, we reach out to the community at large to get their sense of feelings. Yes, there's been a lot of apprehension when it comes to builders coming in, making promises. Nothing comes to fruition. But I am on this project because I met with the developer, Mr. Murray, and I asked the hard questions. And based on the response and the visible proof that I have seen, the reason I'm standing here, appealing to the mayor through the City Council to ask you for support. We went to Planning Commission, and the Planning Commission did deny our application on the grounds that it did not fit into the code for that area. And we understand that. But like any development, and like any development, the City Council has the opportunity of overriding city planning, and that's what we're asking for today. We took the initiative to go out and speak to lenders, potential lenders, who would be interested in funding this project. And I will say that we have received interests from up to seven financial institutions. We received one even this morning. And that was one of the concerns that our community has, whether or not there's money to build or whether or not it's a situation that we're looking for entitlements to be approved and the developer disappears. That's not the situation here. Mr. Murray has been a developer for years. He has built in California. He has built nothing of this magnitude, for transparency, but he has built millions and millions of dollars, over 22 letters of support from businesses that are raging from Starbucks that wants to do a coffee shop. We have Cambria, that's the hotel, that's to be a vendor. We have local small businesses, Pilates Studios, who wants to go into the wellness center. So we look for people in the community that we want to be a part of this project. We have snack shops. We have Mario's, a snack shop. He's a staple in the community, and he has expressed interest in having a snack shop in the facility. We have notary who are looking for business space to use because we have business space within the property as well. We have folks that express interest in the lounge, the tourism driver, the church, the house of God. They want to do big events like the BET Gospel Events. They want to do the Stella Awards. So we've been talking to different people who we think are aligned with the project and are supporting the project. We reached out to the African Chamber. They're supporting the project. We spoke to the Urban Chamber. They support economic development in the area, as well as the Latin Chamber. We reached out to the Latin Chamber, Peter at the Latin Chamber, to see if this is something, and he supports economic development within that area because for too long, there's no development in the area. We went ahead, and Mr. Murray went ahead and met with a construction company, a contractor here in town. That was one of the concerns of planning. Do we have a contractor? Yes, we have a contractor. Burke Contractor has given us a letter of interest to be the developer for the property. And on top of that, we talk about, and when we talk about this property, I'm so passionate about it. We go back to economic development. If you look at the design, the rendering that we're looking at, this is an anchor in West Las Vegas. Right now, it's dirt. And I understand City Council has to be very prudent when it comes to what goes in an area to make sure that it's viable. And because we wanted to make sure that this project is a feasible project, it was one of the things that City Council was, not City Council, Planning was concerned about. What's the feasibility of this project? We went ahead and had a feasibility study done to show how feasible this project is in the historic West Side. So we did a feasibility study. So a lot of the things that they came to us and asked us about, we tightened that up. We sat back as a team to see how we could make this all work. We went out to the Culinary Union, the Southern Nevada Business Trade, Building Trade, as well as Evelyn at the, her union as well, the Women's Union. So we went to these different unions to see, is this a project that would be aligned with your members? Because we want to get the entire community involved. Yes, there are constituents, residents in the area that opposes the project, and they oppose the project for whatever reason, and we respect that. But then we do have residents that supports the project wholeheartedly. We had a community meeting back in April. We had about 75 people that attended that community meeting. And if we looked at the ratio when they did the sign-in, from the 75, we only had 10 people that were in opposition. There might have been others in the room that opposed or against or for, but they never signed in. So we're using that number as a litmus test to see this is a project that we wholeheartedly support. We talked about the letters of support. And if you look at, and before closing, before I wrap up, because I could talk all day, I'm sorry. Give me a mic. I'll talk all day. Without wrap-up soon, I'm in contention for your time. So I ask, please, listen to us, support the projects. Ask us the hard questions. Put us on the spot because we want to be good neighbors in West Las Vegas. Mr. Murray has invested over $5 million in this project already, doing renderings, architects, attorneys, and different things. You know, cumbrences on the land and things like that, and he hasn't even put a shovel in the ground yet. So that just shows me his persistence. And I started with persistence, participation, and partnership. That is what we're looking for, and we want to be good stewards with the City of Las Vegas. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jo, and thank you again to the council for your time. I want to finish with three specific points. One point on the gaming license. Number two, a personal anecdote. And finally, a general point about ZIP Code 89106. On point one, the gaming license. We're concerned that without approval of entitlements or being able to work with the council, that the Nevada Gaming Control Board will not approve a further extension of the grandfathered license, which Kevin spoke about the uniqueness and value of that. Number two, a personal anecdote. I've lived downtown since 2009, Charleston and Las Vegas Boulevard, in Soho Lofts, and used to walk to work to Lionel Sawyer on Up Fourth Street and come back. And it was a very, 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 sometimes concerning walk after 8 o'clock, 9 o'clock, 10 o'clock at night. The English Hotel, the development of the Arts District recently, has revitalized the Arts District, has revitalized an area that shared many characteristics with the property that we have here. And that's palpable. And now there is activity, there is development, and those walks don't now come with any concerns. Walking to court, walking all over by the Arts District, and it feels like an entirely different place because of the English Hotel and because of related developments in that area. Finally, I want to make a general point about ZIP Code 89106. This is an Economic Opportunity Zone. It's deemed by the federal government in conjunction with the Governor of Nevada. Economic opportunity zones require certification from the U.S. Secretary of the Treasury, assigning that, delegating that authority to the IRS. It is a distressed area. But let's put that in numbers. The median income, and this is from the census data from the federal government, for 89106, two years ago, was $36,403. The median income for 89135, So those numbers say more than I think any words can what is really needed with an Economic Opportunity Zone and what's needed here with this historic property in the Town Tavern. Thank you.
Thank you very much. May I have a staff report, please?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Seth Floyd, for the record. Mayor, the proposed development consists of two separate project applications. For the southern half of the proposed development, in order to accommodate the large scale of the proposed development, the applicant is requesting to rezon the property. This would result in spot zoning, a special use permit to exceed the airport overlay height requirements, a variance to allow 23 stories where seven is the maximum allowed in the current T4-MS transect zone, and multiple waivers for setbacks, slot coverage, and to allow zero parking and no amenity zone along G and F Street and Jackson Avenue. Related requests are also proposed for the northern half of the development. Similar to the above, the applicant's request to rezon the northern half of the proposed development would result in spot zoning, with a special use permit required to exceed the airport overlay height restriction, a variance to allow 31 stories where seven is the maximum allowed in the current T4-N transect zone. and multiple waivers for setbacks and parking requirements. Those are requests that staff cannot support, as these are self-imposed hardships and preferential in nature. As the proposed development does not support the 100 Plan, the 2045 Downtown Las Vegas Master Plan for the Historic West Side, nor the West Las Vegas Plan, staff finds the proposed development is not compatible with the surrounding area and recommends denial of all applications for both projects. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This is a public hearing, is there anyone else wishing to be heard on this item? If so, please come to the podium and state your name. I will give everybody that comes up two minutes to state their case.
Good day, city council. My name is Cordelia Wallace. I live at 610 West Van Buren Avenue. I live directly across the street from the proposed project. I have concerns about the project, because it would greatly increase the traffic near my home. The noise would be nonstop. I would have a loss of privacy. The streets are not constructed to handle and withstand that type of traffic that would be generated. The land is too small for such a grandiose project. It's, I don't believe it's even an acre, the proposed land, that they want to put the project on. It does not fit the character of the neighborhood. You know, they keep saying that they've personally met with the residents, but they haven't. I've gone to maybe two meetings with the owners, but they've never sat down personally with us and my neighbors and discussed it with us, and really listened to our concerns about the project. So I just ask that you please take this into consideration when you make your decision. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Collins, would you identify yourself for the record?
Good morning, mayor and city council people. My name for the record is Jean Collins. And I live at 1411 Virginia City Avenue, 89106 Las Vegas, Nevada. I wasn't going to show up today. But I got to thinking about the work, the effort, that we have put into developing the communities so that our community would look like other communities around the city. So I decided to show up. And I heard, Mr. Mayor started on this over 10 years ago. Well, if you have a project that you've been working on 10 years, you should have the finance. Now, you didn't hear them say they had the finance. They have interest. Well, in 10 years, how long, how long does it take you to come up with the finance if you have a project such as this? I asked him two questions. Number one, do you have the finance? And number two, if you have the finance, then we could sit down and talk about how we fit into your project. Now, you all have heard what they said. Not once did he say, "I have the project." And then there's something else, Mayor and city council people. There's a lien on the property. How is it that they have the gall to come down here and ask you all to approve something that is not even feasible to move forward on? How could a business person shows up before you all and says, "I want you to pass this, however, I'm gonna get the money later. However, I'm gonna sit down with the community." And I heard a number of 75 people that are meeting. Well, I went to the meeting. And the question was asked, "How many of you lives at 89106?" And you know what the number was? Two.
Thank you, Mr. Collins.
May I say one thing, ma'am?
Yes, you may.
On my way here, I thought about Second Samuel. And it says, "Can one man make a difference?" And the answer is yes. You all are the answer to the "one man can make a difference." The book says "one man," but I say "one individual can make a difference." And I ask you all to do what stand up for me.
Thank you, Mr. Collins.
Deny this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Would you state your name for the record?
Yes, good afternoon. My name is Leonard Martin. I live 623 Harrison Avenue, Las Vegas, Nevada, 89106. I'm the current candidate running for the Historic West Side Community Association. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would like to thank my councilwoman, Ms. Armstrong, for standing stern when you get documentation mailed to you threatening something that's not good for our community. I appreciate you standing strong with your response of denial. I would be, I want to also thank Annie Kilpon, Kilpon in the Department of Neighborhood Services, Revitalization, Community Engagement. We had our meeting last night at the Historic West Side School. And some of the issues that came up were themes for Jackson and Van Buren Street theme establishments and businesses for that area. It's true, the Historic West Side, I've been a resident taxpayer for over two decades plus. And for lack of words, discrimination, unjust reasons, it's been looked over on the Historic West Side. It's time to move forward past that. We do need an anchor establishment, but this not it. Number one thing you talked about was compliance. At the city planning meeting, they went into detail about some of the projects that can ruin the development in the neighborhood, like Fountain Blue Downtown on the Strip. They mentioned that in particular, how the proposed, you guys voted to put that in, and it then established and had another owner 15 years later. We don't have that time now. This time is of the essence for us. We have an incubator system set up at the Historic West Side School, along with the minds and the professors of UNLV. If you own a plot of land, parcel of land, fine. But let's run it through the professionals to see what's the economic boost for our community.
Thank you very much.
We would appreciate using the minds and the development of our city and the university to pick what's going to be a boost to, especially the historic Black community.
Thank you so much. Is there anybody else wishing to be heard on this issue? If not, I will close the public meeting. Are there any comments or questions from the council? Yes, Councilwoman Seaman.
Thank you, Mayor. So my understanding is that this, what, I mean, I've been in that area, and there's a lot of money that we put into the public sidewalks and everything, but it's still all empty land, is that correct?
That's correct.
So is it, is it commercial around, or is it backed up to residential? Our architect can answer that.
The planning would like us to match the infill.
Okay.
There is, there is nothing in the infill. So what exactly they would like to match? We don't know. Second thing, anybody that spoke about the people that were here, they all want money personally. And I'm not here to give nobody personal money. They all, whatever, they tried to grab the, these people that came to this podium. And another thing, the only thing this community can revitalize is tourism. If they open any restaurant today or anything, nobody gonna show up. Only tourism. And the best thing to bring tourism, it's sporting, like NFL, NHL, NBA. Las Vegas already took, other words, took these facilities. Therefore, the only thing left is a casino with a spatial significant to attract tourism. And if that's not going to be, the revitalize of the West Side will not happen.
So how many units? I have one more question, Mayor, through you. How many units of housing will you be putting on this property?
336 apartment units. And this is live and work establishment. Like whoever live in the apartments can work in the casino, restaurants, and the project, which will create a lot of jobs. And that's what we're interested in, to create job to the people as well. Just to building, everything, anything could be done, there is only housing. No business gonna come alone. And housing alone, with affordable housing, will create a ghetto. If we continue to approve housing, 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 it's gonna be a ghetto. It need business to support the housing.
And to go back to your question, Councilwoman Seaman, there is landfilling, there are residential homes in the area too. One of the ladies that spoke against the project, she lives across the street. And to her point, we did go out, we didn't actually speak to her, but we spoke to her husband. So we were ahead of to talk to him. Thank you.
Is there anyone else on the council that wishes to speak? Yes, Ms. Diaz.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is more for, I guess, the staff, and also just to wrap my brain around. In your presentation, you all mentioned the desire to shift the dynamics of the Historic West Side, to make it more like the Arts District. I couldn't agree more. We're putting that out in the universe to make sure that it does take off and that we have some amazing projects come, because the need is great, and we want to see that area flourish, just like the rest of the city. You mentioned in your testimony that things like the English Hotel had brought lots of value added to our area. And, and so then I'm comparing the English Hotel to what you're proposing in terms of the height, the stories, the intensity for the amount of acreage. This is under two acres that we're talking about. And so it doesn't even exist in the Arts District. Nothing that high is currently built. And so I kind of wanted to ask my staff, the English Hotel is about, is that a T5, just for frame of reference? Is that a T4? I'm trying to wrap my brain around the zoning there and what is being proposed to draw.
Seth Floyd, for the record, give us just one second to verify the zoning.
Okay, I threw them a curve, they did not want to ask them.
I believe it's C2, but we'll.
It's C2, but what would it be equivalent to? Because I, do we remember how high, I just think it's mid-rise, maybe?
It falls into the mid-rise category, we can check the height on that.
So what I guess what I'm trying to get at is, I think that no one on this council would be opposed to the development of the site if we felt it was harmonious and compatible, if we felt it was a mid-rise development. I just look at the stories, at the intensity of everything that wants to be erected there. We do have to be responsible and respectful of everything that currently exists and make sure that we're making the best foot forward. So I know that there's been lots of meetings you've been holding, but I don't see any, well, I do see concessions, because at one time there was 60 stories proposed, and now we're where we're at. But I still think, just to draw some points of reference, the newly erected Durango Casino is 15 stories on a 71-acre site. Aliante, which is also, I'm drawing these comparisons because there are more neighborhood casinos, right?
Yes.
Aliante is a nine-story building on a 40-acre site. Boulder Station, 27 acres on 15 stories. I'm just trying to kind of say, for two, under two acres, the number of stories that are being requested, just, I can't, in good conscience, look at my planning team, look at the planning commission team and say, "I can override their expertise on this subject matter." I do feel that if it was pared down, if it was made, and if we're taking community input, I think we can get there. But right now, per what we're seeing in front of us today, I don't, I don't see that we're quite there and that all input has been taken to make the best product move forward. So those are just my two cents, Madam Mayor.
Madam Council, just to clear it up.
Could you identify yourself for the record?
I'm the developer, Shlomo Mary.
Your name, yes.
Seven stories, I prefer to let the property go, because it will not create tourism. And nobody with his bright mind will build a casino for a community that average $36,000 a year. The community need to be the service, not the customer. And if it's the seven story, that's what you guys thinking really, it's gonna lose the gaming license by next month. And I don't think anything could be done over there. Any business will be ever open, because it's impossible to have a commercial business and make money on seven stories. It's a shooting in your foot. So that will happen without me. And it won't be casino license.
Yes, go ahead, Ms. Seaman. So the housing part, is that, how many stories is the housing part?
Eight stories of parking. And it's total of 31 stories. So eight stories of parking and 23 stories of apartment.
Okay, great, thank you. Anyone else? When I first started running for this office, I, probably the first meeting I went to in the Historic West Side, they were making a presentation about this project. And I remember thinking, since I'm very much, I'm very anxious to develop the Historic West Side, it's a promise that I've made. And you and I have met on numerous occasions to talk about it. It is a very exciting project. But from the first time that we talked about this, when I was a candidate till now, there has been very little progress on bringing the community into this proposal and this dream. There's a bit, I know that you lowered it from 60 stories to.
60 to 42, to 34, now to 31, and that's about it.
I know, and I understand your dilemma, that the numbers have to pencil out if this project is going to work. But I also know it is so inconsistent with the area. And there is such a backlash in that area for this project that I, I think if there was a vote right now, this project would be voted down.
Please.
And I think this would be a very unfortunate thing. Is there any way?
Nothing.
You will not.
I give you the property for free. There is nothing can be done. If there is seven stories, I don't want to be involved. The church, I'm not gonna buy it, and this is all gonna fall out. There is nothing we can do about it. Unless it makes money, I'm here to make money. So nobody with his right mind will build a casino with seven story, with 100 hotel room, all's gonna come. No convention center, no theater. Who I'm gonna talk to, who I'm gonna apply to to come in tourism? There is nothing there, I'm sorry. Again, it will lose the casino license, I let all of you know. And after that, there is nothing that the West Side can revitalize. I guarantee you, it's not gonna be any commercial.
Madam Mayor?
Councilwoman Sommers Armstrong, would you care to comment?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mary and your team, for making your presentation. We appreciate your interest in trying to help Historic West Las Vegas to be revitalized. But I think that we have to recognize that no one project is going to create the revitalization that this community needs. Because when this community was doing. Because when this community was doing well during segregation, no one establishment provided everything that the community needed. This is a collaborative effort. During the time of Town Tavern, I'm not the historian, but I can give you a little bit, we had the Cove Hotel. We had the El Morocco. There were other businesses that created an environment that fostered small business and development in that community.
Good luck.
And what I was hoping to see is that you all would work in collaboration with the other things that are already happening, that have already beat you to the punch. We have Share West Side, that is going up, has already broken ground. There's going to be incubator space there. We're going to have restaurant incubators and food attractions. We have the West Side Education and Training Center that will be finished soon, that will also be a draw into the community. And we also have churches existing in the community that create weekly tourism in the amounts of thousands of people. And there's collaboration and community that could be built by working together. That's what my office is trying to do, is to see how we can look at this as a universe of growth and not just a single thing that is going to answer every question.
That's what I've been trying to do for a long time.
Thank you, sir. Madam Mayor?
Yes, continue, please.
Thank you. I grew up in Oakland, California, 98th and Edes Avenue. My parents were working class. My dad was an orderly at a hospital, and my mother worked from home as small business. We worked hard, we kept our yard up. My mom had our house painted, we kept it clean. And no one ever wanted to have their neighborhood referred to as a ghetto. Ever. It's offensive to call the community of people who have historically been systematically disenfranchised, to put disparaging remarks about that on the homes of the two community members who are here. They have lived here for 26 years. They moved in right after I did to the community. And if you go to those homes, they're not a ghetto.
They are a ghetto.
Excuse me.
Mr. Mary, if you wouldn't mind.
Ms. Wallace has a beautiful home. She keeps her yard up. She grows fruit in her backyard.
Beautiful.
To refer to these folks' community as a ghetto is an insult. And this is part of the reason why we're not making headway, is because our community is not looking for a savior, we're looking for a partner. We're looking for people who are interested in working with us.
Mr. Mary?
Okay.
You really need to let her make her statement.
Yeah, that's why she threw me out of her office. It's okay, go ahead.
Go ahead, Councilwoman.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It is offensive to use disparaging language to people who have been disenfranchised. You mentioned, Mr. Thistle, the Hundred Plan. And specifically, the Hundred Plan speaks to a boutique hotel. This is not a boutique. This is not a boutique.
Can I respond to that?
No, sir. This is not a boutique. This is a behemoth on less than two acres. And I am going to agree with staff's evaluation of the intensity and its appropriateness on this small piece of land. I'm going to agree with them that the impacts here far outweigh any benefit this community could ever see. And I will just finish by saying this before I make my motion. I'm here to do a job. People voted for me. They have, are trying to have, I'm trying to build faith in this community by being present and attentive and listening to what the community is saying. And they've spoken on numerous occasions that they are not comfortable with this development. They are not comfortable with the threats. And I am offended by the threats. And threats don't work well with me, like I said. I'm from East Oakland.
And somebody talking about my religion.
98th and Edes Avenue.
Now, what's she bullshitting?
Mr. Mary, Mr. Mary, I don't want to have to do this, but the marshal.
She told me at the office, I don't care about your religion, I don't want to help you, I'd have nothing to do with you. And now she talking about Ily.
Mr. Mary, the marshals are going to escort you out.
I'm going out alone. Cancel it, please. You're going to own the West Side forever.
My apologies.
If I may say, this has been a continuing challenge, and.
We understand.
All right. Madam Councilwoman, would you please continue?
Yes, Mayor. So with all that said, I'm going to support the decision of the Planning Commission and support the staff's. Recommendations, thank you, that we deny this, that we deny this project.
All right. Before we vote, let me just ask one more time, because everybody up here is pro-development for West Las Vegas, particularly the Councilwoman who represents the area. Is there any way that you would go back to the drawing board and come up with a project that would be compatible with that area and that's, on that parcel, that would satisfy the needs of the community and, and be an anchor for growth? If that's not possible, then we're going to move forward with this vote.
Thank you, Madam, Madam Mayor, for that question. I believe Mr. Mary's, the emotion is running high right now. So I understand that, and I need to apologize to the Councilwoman for the outburst. My apologies, Councilwoman Armstrong. We had, have the discussion, but there has not been a consensus on it. I do believe that we could potentially bring a project there, but we have to figure out what the financing in terms of, you know, profit looks like. Because at the end of the day, it's a business, you know, an investment to see what it would look like. I mean, Mr. Mary indicated that going lower, that the cost factor wouldn't make sense for him. So Kevin and I, we can't make that determination, but I'm sure, I, I think somewhere it's aligned that potentially, something could potentially go there.
Mr. City Attorney, let me ask you a procedural question. If we respond to the Councilwoman's motion, and this project is voted down, can it come back after, if in fact the applicant wishes to work with the community and as the Councilwoman said, be a partner, not a savior, is, what, what happens after there's a vote?
Jeff Dorcek, City Attorney, for the record. Thank you, Mayor. I'll use that question to cover a few points to wrap it up before we get to the vote. I believe we do have Councilwoman Summers Armstrong's motion to deny item 60A through F on the floor. And then don't forget, we'll also have to do 61 as well, all of the letters. With respect to your question, Mayor, because there's a zoning change involved here with the application, if it's denied today, they will not be able to bring back the item for a year because they're asking for rezoning. However, they can come back before a year if they stay within the current zoning that exists on the property. And I'll use that point to mention, as the applicants know, council knows, and we've received some written remarks from your client in the past, and also with some of the comments this morning. If the items are denied today, the project, it is our position, and I believe it's the correct one, that the landowner's property is not going to lose any value. He is going to walk out of this chamber with the same rights and abilities with the property that he had when he walked in, including an unrestricted gaming license. And he will also have the same zoning he walked in with. And to the mayor's point, that is T-4 Main Street zoning and T-4 N zoning that the Community Development Team, Seth and Peter, could tell you more about. But just on its face, both of those are designed to be flexible, commercial, service uses, residential. And ultimately, where this project is running into a lot of the comments you're hearing from our council, a maximum height of two to five stories for T-4 Main, or two to five stories for T-4 Main, and then for the T-4 N, I believe that's up to three, yeah, three max. So, Mayor, if they can come back with a project in that type of height and in the appropriate footprint, because that's another thing, these zoning, the current zoning that we developed with Community Development and in the master plan is, is done to create, as the Councilwoman described, what we're looking for in the entire neighborhood. So if they can have the footprint and the height match the zoning that exists, they can be back here in a couple of months with the project. And they have unrestricted gaming, they still have unrestricted gaming, they still have the ability to come forward and ask for an SUP, to get on-premise unlimited alcohol. I mean, there's a lot of options that exist right now. That value stays with the property. The project put forward is, is higher than what we have it zoned for, and that's why we have all these additional variances and rezones in the application package. So with that, I hope that answers your question.
Thank you, and thank you, Councilwoman, for letting me seek clarification before we vote. And now shall we vote? Madam Mayor, just for clarification, if I'm in favor of the developers, Mr. Dorcek, would that be a yes or no? Because this is an appeal.
This is a direct application request, so it's, the, the motion is to deny the application. The motion is to deny the application.
Motion is to deny, so, okay, I'm clear. Oh, wait, now we are all confused.
City Attorney, just to clarify that, motion is for agenda items 60A through F?
Correct. We're going to do item 60 first. Item 60 is the casino portion of the project. Councilwoman Summers Armstrong has made a motion to deny that project, so to not allow it.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, please vote. Post. Motion carries. We hope you'll come back with a.
Here's one more before we walk away.
Okay. Do we have another motion, Councilwoman?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, for item 61. Again, I make a motion for denial of the appeal. But I also agree with your comments. We want development, but we are not going to be bullied. This is either a collaboration or it ain't. And if you want a collaboration, you're going to get much further than being obstructionist. So in this stance, for this one, as it is presented, I will say, I vote motion to deny the appeal. A through 60, A.
To clarify, there's not an appeal, it's to deny.
The application. I'm sorry, thank you.
Please vote. Motion is passed. Again, please, listen to what we're saying. There's a tremendous impetus to develop that area. This project, as it currently has been proposed, is not compatible and has too many impediments for the council members, by and large, to be comfortable with and to be able to work with the community so we can get something meaningful that will, that we'll be proud of for generations to come. And we would really welcome that.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Have a good, good, was it morning or afternoon? I don't even know.
We got five more minutes. Thank you. Thank you very much. Agenda item number 62, 25-0124-SDR1 Site Development Plan Review, applicant owner Southwest Holding Company LLC, for possible action on a land use entitlement project request for a major amendment to an approved plot plan review Z-0071-991 for the proposed addition of a one-story 16,877 square foot commercial building to an existing shopping center with a waiver for perimeter landscape buffer requirements on a 1.59 acre portion of 16.68 acres on the southeast corner of Craig Road and Tenaya Way, APN 138-03-715-003. C1 Limited Commercial Zone, Ward 4, Ms. Alan Polensky. The Planning Commission and staff recommend approval. This is a public hearing that I now declare open. Is the applicant present?
Yes, good morning. My name is Matt Huss. Our business address is 8350 West Sahara Avenue, and I'm a part of the ownership.
And will you please tell us about your project?
Yes. We are proposing a freestanding 16,877 square foot building. It offers cross-access to an existing shopping center that we actually constructed about 15 years ago, maybe even a bit longer. So it's the very last component of this shopping center that's being built out. It does front the 95, it's near the intersection of Craig and Tenaya. During the Planning Commission hearing, there were comments about clarifying that there'd be adequate landscape, particularly along the south side of the project that fronts the freeway. So we were sure to, we were certain to address that. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you very much. Before that, may we have a staff report?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Peter Lonestein, for the record. The proposed waivers and exceptions pertaining to perimeter landscape buffers and the planting material will have minimal negative impacts to the adjacent multifamily development, which has existing mature perimeter landscaping plant materials. Furthermore, the request of major amendment is consistent with the previously approved site design and building evaluations within the existing development. Therefore, staff is recommending approval of the request of major amendment. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone wishing to be heard on this item? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. Mr. Applicant, are you okay with the conditions and, and request of the Planning Commission?
Yes, yes, I am.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions or comments from members of the council? Seeing none, is there a motion? Councilwoman Polensky.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Mayor. One question, too. I'm happy and prepared to make a motion. What is, do you have a LOI on this? Do you have an intent? Do you, or building just speculatory? What's the long-term vision?
Well, we don't have an actual LOI or an actual end user identified just yet. We're proposing, I know that the property is Zone C1, so we analyzed that zoning designation, and we're certain that we'll be able to attract end users that would be obviously consistent with that zoning and harmonious with the existing center. We know the area very well just because of our history there and the fact that we developed the, the large shopping center adjacent to it, but nothing just yet.
Okay, I didn't know if there was plans. At one point, I think I had heard maybe garage for auto repair, and then you construct it with like bays, et cetera, et cetera, but nothing at all, just clean slate. I pass it by every day, so I'm, you know, I get questions from the neighbors, what's going in there, excitement, interest, et cetera.
Right. I know we did a design that did show bays, I believe, on the, the west side of the, the building. So we'd be open to entertaining, I know there are certain C1 designated uses that are, I think, light, automotive in nature, so we'd be very open to that. We've done different projects of that nature in the past, but we, we haven't identified anyone just yet for that, for that specific building.
Okay, I guess I want to stop asking.
But we're open to suggestions.
I'll call you. I'm prepared to make a motion, Madam Mayor, for approval, item number 62, 62 even.
Shall we vote? Motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Ms. Seaman has been excused from the rest of the meeting. Item 63, 25-0149, for possible action on the following land use entitlement project request on .20 acres at 5313 Redberry Street, our three medium density residential zone. 63A, 25-0149-. 25-0149-VAR1, to allow five parking spaces where eight are required, 63B, 25-0149-SDR1, for a proposed two-story, four-unit multifamily residential development with waivers of the perimeter landscape buffer requirements. The applicant owner is Beggs Construction, Inc. The Planning Commission recommends approval on the entire land use entitlement project. Staff recommends denial on the entire land use entitlement project. These are in Ward 5, Ms. Summers Armstrong. And our public hearings, which I now declare open, is the applicant present?
Yes, my name is Michael Beg. This project was approved back in 2020. My building permit is in the process to get the building permit from the City Building Department. While we are in the process, the variance I was given was expired, so basically, we are looking to extend the variance I had already had. And this is a nice project on the area. All the eight fourplexes are there. There's only one lot is available. Basically, I have to go every week to clean up the stuff people throwing up there. I'm building the same fourplex as compared to others. Basically, this is designed for elderly people, where I'm giving them washer and dryer each unit, where people are more comfortable not taking their laundry out. And really, it hands the neighborhood also. I have spoken with Councilwoman Armstrong last week, and that's on her area, and I think it will improve the neighborhood as well. So we appreciate that, your support. So I can go ahead, actually. We were supposed to start the project last year, because this variance was expired, so I was told we cannot extend it, but you have to reapply it again. So I appreciate all the help you can give us.
Thank you so much. May I have a staff report?
Thank you, Mayor Seth Blough, for the record. Mayor, while additional housing is a needed priority within the city of Las Vegas, staff is unable to support this project because of the associated parking variance, and therefore, staff's recommending denial of the request. Thank you.
Is there any...
I have a letter, excuse me, Mayor.
Yes.
I have a letter from the Planning Commission. It says, "The Planning Commission had a regular meeting held on May 13, 2025, voted to approval of the following project."
Yes, we're aware of that. Thank you so much. Is there anybody else wishing to be heard on this matter? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. Are there any questions or comments from members of the council? All right, Ms. Summers Armstrong.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you so much, Mr. Beg, for coming down to the meeting today. We did meet, we are aware that we do need housing in Ward 5. This neighborhood doesn't need an empty lot, and this project would be in line with what is there. I did express to him my concern about, you know, care and upkeep, and I've asked the planning, I've asked our staff to make sure that we've got a, Mr. Lowenstein, if you could read in our usual DPMR, I think I have the...
Conditions.
Conditions, thank you, that's it. The conditions, please.
Through you, Madam Mayor. I'll take a quick look, because I'm going to, I'm, fingers crossed that it's already in here, because it's quite lengthy, and it actually exists as condition number nine in the, associated with the site development review, so it already exists for the DPMR, which is, the acronym stands for Declaration of Private Maintenance Requirements, so that is included in the staff report, and no additional conditions would be needed.
All right, and does the applicant agree to the conditions?
Yes, absolutely.
All right, Ms. Summers Armstrong.
So in that case, I would be willing to put forth a motion for approval.
All right, shall we vote? Please post. Motion carries. Congratulations, best of luck.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you so much, everybody.
Agenda Item 64, set date on any appeals filed or required public hearings. I would instruct the city clerk to set the public hearing dates, and appeals from the city planning commission meetings, and dangerous buildings and nuisance litter abatements.
Will do, thank you.
Thank you very much. Citizens' Participation Agenda Item 65, public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters within the jurisdiction of the city council. No subject may be acted upon by the city council unless that subject is on the agenda and is scheduled for action. If you wish to be heard, come to the podium, give your name for the record. The amount of discussion on any single subject, as well as the amount of time any single speaker is allowed, may be limited. This is your opportunity to address the council, but the council is not able to respond or engage in dialogue. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak under this portion? Will you please state your name?
Hello, Madam Mayor, thank you. My name's Grace Albinese, A-L-B-A-N-E-S-E.
And you have two minutes to speak.
All right. So I have a picture here of Kelvin Watson, he's of the library, he oversees the library, and, oh, you can't see his picture. Okay, so, thank you. His library, his librarians are creating a database on me of my personal information, and I believe he's behind it. They have PDF files on me, and they have a database on me at the Spring Valley Library, Carl and Jonathan. Epic.org, the Code of Fair Information Practices, there must be no personal data record-keeping systems, which vary existence as secrets, and there must be a way for a person to find out what information about the person is in a record and how it is used. Please go to epic.org. And the American Library Association, what are the privacy rights and responsibilities of staff, volunteers, and trustees? Please read that through the Privacy and Question and Answers of the American Library Association, because this gentleman here, Kelvin Watson, he's in violation of all those standards, because there's, he's allowing a database of me to be, to be created at the Spring Valley Library, and at all his libraries, in fact, and it goes against the Patriot Act, which ends government mass surveillance, Section 215. Now I got thrown out of the Spring Valley Library, June 14, 2025, for one year, because I know too much, and a security guard is downloading an app on me, that's an app that has my personal information on it.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that cares to address the council? Would you state your name for the record, please?
How are we doing here? Yeah, I got another little comment card. Michael Garwood, just average citizen, drop in here a couple of times a year. Well, as you probably noticed, it's blazing hot again, and probably will be most of the summer. So what is it going to take? What kind of leadership do we need at the city, county, LBCBA level to actually do something about it, like, I don't know, plant a million or so trees? It's been done in other places that are known for their heat, Medellin, Colombia, Barcelona, Spain, places like that, I've read all kinds of articles, and too bad we can't interact on that. I mean, I've lived here off and on since 2006, and it does seem to be gradually getting warmer and warmer. Stuff like that is because we have so much concrete and pavement and not enough natural terrain, not enough greenery, and this silly law the state government passed, oh, you got to get rid of your unnecessary grass, it's non-functional. Sometimes people wind up accidentally, or they just don't care, they wind up killing a perfectly good shade trees, because they removed the entire irrigation system, it's like, oh, darn, that was watering those trees, too late now, they're dead, they fell over. There used to be two big beautiful 80, 90-year oaks at the northeast corner of... Couple idiots run the place, I don't know who it is, I'd call and complain if I thought it would do any good. Hey, why'd you people let the trees die? Too late now. So it's just all the more hotter there. Madam Mayor, when you moved here in the 70s, I looked it up, the average high and low in July was like 102 and 75. It's a lot higher than that now, and that is the fault of thousands of short-sighted decisions by thousands of developers who just didn't think, well, let's plant some trees around this house or apartment, and they're like, nah, costs too much, you know, who cares? So that's where leadership comes in, that's what we elect you guys for, do something about it. I can't, I water them. Be not doing so well, and bug people about it, but that's all I can do. And then, since you also were with the LBCBA...
Thank you very much, we appreciate it.
Try to get some representation back.
Thank you. And I think you'll be very happy to know, the city is in the process of planting 60,000 trees in the, in the city of Las Vegas. Thank you so much. Is there anybody else...
Do we have an official city forester? Because we could use one. They do another place.
I already implemented that, thank you. All right. You've been very patient. Please state your name.
Stuff, sir, is that yours? Oh, nope. Forget, thank you. Do you want it?
You have two minutes.
Okay, I'm Douglas Joseph Thatcher. So I just want to say, do I need to spell it? T-H-A-T-C-H-R, Douglas J-L-A-S, Joseph Millname. So, Madam Mayor, I voted for you for mayor, and I supported you, and I had a lot of people vote for you as well, and I'm also Italian, a Hojanniki at birth, Deborah Jean is my mother, so she didn't raise me, and there's rumors that the president is my father, Trump, and Elon's my uncle, so I lost my job at Venetian because of the Mexican race, or being discriminatory racist towards me. I never... I'm around the Venetian back in May, the date was, hold on, the 18th's on the paper, May 18th, wherever, I went there, gave my last check, they're like, Douglas Thatcher, is that you? Come out the car, interrogating me, and they're like, my Uber ride... Caucasian, just like me, and as well as probably Polish, whatever, mixed. So she got the job, and she works at the casino park, she's a waitress. She called me, please pray for me, I'm stressed out. The Caucasian and the black people, a race, the people that built this country and helped America. If it wasn't for the blacks and... We're illegal, we have a right to be in America, but the Mexicans feel entitled, that they deserve to be here and have matched positions with no degrees and no citizenship, some of them, not all. And the vice president was just here, JD Vance, and they all were scared out their butt, like, oh, he's here. With sex trafficking on her record, to the Venetian upstairs, I heard from a coworker, and they said, you can't come up, you have sex trafficking. Why is she in this country? Why is she in this state? We don't allow that stuff. And we have a new president and a new mayor, and we need to fix downtown. It's horrible. LaFey in one day, and I have no sidewalk, no bus stop, I have people that live there that are veterans, disabled, and mentally ill as well, trying to live and survive. Some of them can't work, and they can't get around. And lastly, we had people losing their kids because La Quinta is a horrible-run hotel. These people putting stuff in these kids, these mothers food at La Quinta on, you know, Paradise. I found out a year ago, I went there to check on these kids, Jemaija Junior, Joseph Greer, their mother is in this town, Shakila Jackson, so they did her wrong, and she struggling, people on these streets, meth needs to get off these streets, it's horrible, it's coming from the border.
Thank you so much, thank you, we appreciate your input.
Actually, two more minutes, there's two more things.
No, you do not have two more minutes.
But there's a lot of problems that need to be addressed. Before you became mayor...
Then you can come to the next meeting and address them. Thank you so much. Thank you very much. Agenda Item Number 66, Council Emerging Issues. Discussion regarding potential items for future city council agendas or awards. Any discussion must be limited to whether or not such proposed item shall be placed on a future agenda, and no discussion regarding the substance of any proposed topic shall occur. No action shall be taken. Do any members of the council have any... Under this item. Agenda Item 67, Council Members' Recognition. Comments made by individual city council members during this portion of the agenda will not be acted upon by the city... And scheduled for action. Ms. Summers Armstrong, you've had a busy morning.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you all for your patience and indulgence today. Just wanted to let you know that on June 11th, we had an interview with Channel 8, talking about the awesome things that are happening in Ward 5, and you can go to Channel 8 and look at the whole thing. On June 12th, we were just honored to participate in the Veterans Treatment Court graduation. There were, I believe, five veterans, men and women who served our country, who had gone through the process and had an opportunity to change their lives. Each were given just such support from the community, as well as beautiful handmade quilts, which are the things that really touch my heart, because my mom is a quilter, and I know how much love goes into them, and I just want to say how proud I am of them, and proud of the city municipal court for really supporting this programming, so that our veterans... Navigate through our criminal justice system and go on to a better life. Also, on June 12th, we participated in a Father's Day luncheon at Doolittle Senior Active Adult Center. As you can see, there were lots of folks there, even staff from our Parks and Recreation Department were there. That were given to them from local businesses, just had a wonderful event, and again, Happy Father's Day, and to all fathers and father figures who do this work in our community, and we just need to keep it going. On June 4th, 10th, we had a lovely event hosted by the Daughters of the American Revolution, Francisco Garcia's chapter, at the Lorenzi Rose Garden. They celebrated the 250th anniversary or birthday of the U.S. Army. It was right there in Ward 5. We had a wonderful event, and I'm grateful to have been invited to speak, just to acknowledge the 250th anniversary or the birthday of the Army, and to share just a little bit of my background as a military spouse, and how I came to Las Vegas. My previous husband, and just important to note that our families are the backbone of our military members, and we were just glad to be able to support this event. Finally, Saturday, June 21st, from 4:00 to 9:00 p.m., right nearby at the World Market Center, the expo, the annual Juneteenth celebration is going to happen. This event is sponsored, co-sponsored by... Our commissioner, William McCurdy II, and with North Las Vegas Mayor Pamela Goings. This is a fundraising event for the Rainbow Dreams Educational Foundation. Rainbow Dreams has a lovely facility right there on Lake Mead and Lexington in historic West Las Vegas. Education to our children, they do a wonderful job, and so this is part of the collaboration in our community with Strong Start in our public schools and other charters, to catch our children early and get them started on a great education, and we are happy to support this event. Finally, if you have any questions about Ward 5, or have issues that you would like addressed, our office is here to support you. You can call us at 702-229-5443. You can send an email to ward5@lasvegasnevada.gov, and my staff is willing... Systems that you need. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, and I will see you at the Juneteenth celebration on Saturday.
Get your pocketbook, because you know they're going to have some great stuff.
I will. Ms. Alan Polensky.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Before I begin... I know, I noticed he's not here at this meeting, this is the last council meeting before he leaves us for retirement, and I'm confident that was done intentionally, so that he wouldn't be here to hear me, but I'm going to miss him very much. I feel like he was the heart and soul of the city for the last 30 years, and we'll move on without him, but I will only do it begrudgingly, Mr. Ford, if you're out there, I wish you the best in the future, but... On Saturday, June 7th, Councilwoman... Dazzle Prom, which was specifically held for individuals in our community with diverse abilities. Tickets for the event sold out. Attendees care... attendees, caregivers, buddies, and volunteers to dance the night away. The night was full of balloons, flowers, food, ice cream, photos, dancing, and even it was truly a night to remember, and it wouldn't have been possible without the amazing effort of an incredible group of people. A huge thank you to the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints, Sky Canyon, balloons and bouncers, Kristi Garnas, Ward 4 and Ward 6 staff, and tens of hundreds of volunteers. Oftentimes, oftentimes, folks with diverse abilities don't have the opportunity to participate in events like this. So I'm so incredibly proud and honored that we could bring this special Next, come on out and join the fun at the Summerlin Patriotic Parade on Friday, July 4th. The parade begins at 9:00 a.m., and it will feature over 70 entries, including classic floats, large helium balloons, marching bands, musical acts, and cartoon characters. Road closure noon, so local residents are encouraged to plan accordingly. And later in the evening, Mayor Berkeley, Councilwoman Bruni and I will be hosting Blast Off in the Basin, our city's fireworks show at Buckskin Basin Park. In addition to viewing location, an additional viewing location will be available at Wayne Bunker Park, adjacent north. This family-friendly marching band, DJ, and food truck offerings for purchase. Don't forget to bring a low-back chair, blankets, and plenty of water. The fireworks show is scheduled to begin about 9:10, and doors open, doors will open at 8:00 p.m. We hope to see you there. Next up, if you ever considered a career in the fire service, this month, LVFR is actively recruiting firefighters. Enjoy competitive pay, comprehensive health insurance, and more. To learn more, the time is now to apply for JAG grants now through June 26. Submit your application by scanning this QR code on the slide. Are you an active-duty military member, veteran, military spouse or child? Don't miss our job 4th, from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. at Ellis Air Force Base Community Commons located at 4311 Washington Boulevard. Next up, do you have any information regarding the nine missing kids featured on this slide? Please take a good look. If you do, please call LVMPD Missing Person Detail at 702-828-3111. At-risk youth or runaways, please reach out, there is always a free bus ride home. And lastly, please stay us the old-fashioned way at 702-229-2524. As always, we are here to provide any assistance that we can. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
On Friday, and being the one man that sits up here, I want to just shout out to the men. I'm doing my best to hold my own. We got issues too, just in case you forgot, we're out here. I'm not going to say anything more, though. And it's Summer Splash.
Keep the issues to yourself.
I know my place. Later this month, on June 28th, from noon to 2:00, come out and enjoy a day of fun, sun, and water at our Ward 1 Summer Splash at Garside Pool. There'll be waterside, splash zones, games, and plenty of delicious ice cream. you come and be respectful of the heat, because it's going to be hot. And that's all I got, Madam Mayor. Reach out to me any way you like, and thanks for the time.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I just want to say Happy belated Father's Day to all of the fathers and father figures. I know that my husband tells me that we moms always want to be pampered and recognized for our love and dedications to our families, and he says I'm equally a part in the family. So can you make sure that we Husband Frank, thank you so much. You do so much for us. Love and appreciate you.
That's great. No more of him.
All right, we're going on to, June 4th, we hosted a meeting at Jonas Park Elementary to talk about more orange cones, I'm sorry, but they're coming. Charleston Storm Drain Construction Project, in third quarter, we're going to start to see Charleston heading west from Maryland Parkway to Commerce. We're going to see the major storm drain construction project continue. We've felt the pain over several stretches of Charleston, even in MPT's area, and obviously on the east side. But now we're heading more towards the arts district, so I just want to say, I'm sorry, it's going to be two years, but we need it, because we need to put in the infrastructure to capture the downpour. When it comes down, it all comes down at once, and we want to make sure that those inlets are there, and those, and the storm drain can capture all that water and take it where we need it. On June 9th, the mayor shakes and buns. And so congratulations, Billy Richardson, I think, third-generation Las Vegas Navadan. And he brought his Holstein shakes and buns from the Cosmopolitan and relocated it in our vibrant arts district. Couldn't be prouder of that investment that he decided to make. But one thing, besides the amazing burgers and yummy shakes, you need to go check out the mini cows. They have Vegas-themed cow statues, and so you'll see, I think it's Muberrachi, and you'll see Vegas Vic in a little cow style. So those are really cute. I really, Doug Elvis is also present, so you gotta go check it out for yourselves.
I thought they were sus.
I could see, I could see from a child's perspective how Wednesday, June 11th, we were able to go to tour one of Ward 3's fire station, Fire Station 4, probably the second busiest fire station in all of the valley. And so I just had an awesome time. Also presencing the acknowledgement of Jordan Moore's contributions to the fire team, and so she was being recognized there while I was going to be whisked away and taken on a tour of everything that happened from this very fire, a very busy fire station. And I just want to thank all the firefighter women and men that do the job as recognized earlier in our ceremonials. They truly are heeding the call when most of us are in need. So thank you to Jordan and Chief Gray for setting that wonderful tour up. The city of Las Vegas offers many valuable resources and services, and we're having many different community connection presentations, so that our constituents and residents can learn more about our amazing programs that we have here at the city to help our residents. And so this is being head-spirited, I believe, by Neighborhood Services Department. And on this flyer, you'll see the different dates and different parts of the city. They're all being hosted at the libraries, and the one I wanted to point out for Ward 3 saved the date August 13th, East Las Vegas Library to gain this last. On Saturday, June 28th, at our fabulous Historic Fifth Street School, we'll have Django Vegas. Another, I think it's been 10 years that we've been having this event. Tickets are on sale now, and we usually do sell out. So if you love to be in the midst of a magical night of hot club-style jazz, then go ahead and get your ticket for Saturday, June 28th, and it will happen 6:00 to 10:00, and celebrate the legacy of Django Reinhardt, and enjoy an unforgettable evening of swing, flamenco, boleros, and more with world-class Mission, $25, all ages welcome, and doors open at 5:30, and you can go get your tickets at www arts las vegas.org. Obviously, that time of year is coming of our neighborhoods and our communities. Let's not use illegal fireworks. Make sure that you, the fireworks you procure and buy and purchase say, safe and sane. Those are the type that are allowed, and you can start kind of exhibiting your patriotism for the independence on July 4th, starting June 28th. But you can't go past the July 4th day to actually light them up. And just wanted to also let you know that that's going to be, all LVMPD's first Tuesday meetings is going to be revolving this topic. So make sure that you go to your first Tuesday at your police station virtually, because they're going to have a Facebook virtual presentation, and there will not be the usual the lie. So just note, because if you go, there's not going to be anyone there to meet you. So just tune in via Facebook Live, and that's all for us. The Ward 3 team is always here to heed your call and your, what you're seeing in our community. So go ahead and subscribe to our Ward 3 newsletter to let us know of awesome things you're doing. Call us at the phone number listed, or email us at ward3@lasveganevada.gov.
Thank you, Councilwoman, and may I say it was a pleasure cutting yet another ribbon with you at calorie job.
And now you know why I said how dangerous this is for our waistlines.
I feel your pain, believe me. Councilwoman Bruni.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good afternoon, everyone. Benefit of going after my colleague, Councilwoman Alan Polanski, is I get to say ditto to a lot of things. So she's already covered this, but I just a saints, various stakes and just serve. We went, we took an idea to them, and they really ran with it, and it made it a most, the most magical evening. So she shared, we look forward to doing it again next year. Last week, we met with our constituents to discuss issues that were top of mind for them. We were pleased to be joined at the meeting with a representative from the Clark County Department of Family Services, who shared information on how to become a foster parent. As we know, we have about 3,000 kids in foster care in Clark County, and we are in desperate need of individuals who are willing to serve as foster parents, especially those who are Spanish-speaking. So please consider opening your home and heart and become a foster parent. Following our meeting with constituents, I joined my colleague, Frances Alan Polanski, and Ed Bernstein to discuss our city's growth-related challenges and our ward priorities. Thank you to Ed Bernstein for his longstanding commitment to the city. Last week, I spoke with Fox 5 to discuss the new state bill that restricts the intentional outdoor release of helium-filled balloons. Thank you to Assemblywoman Sandra Hodeguy and Governor Lombardo for passing this bill, which will go a long way to protect our infrastructure, especially as our temperatures Team Bruni was pleased to welcome over 400 anglers, both experienced and first-time fishermen and women, to our annual fishing derby at Floyd Lamb Park. We took advantage of Nevada's Department of Wildlife's Free Fishing Day, in which Nevada residents can fish without pulling a license. Our youngest award-winning fisherman was six years old. Thank you to our longstanding supporters, Boy Scouts Troop 129, who offered a delicious Nevada Building Trades Unions, who offered over 100 free fishing poles, and Las Vegas Worm Farm, who provided free worm Following our fishing derby, firemen from Las Vegas Fire and Rescue Station 48 joined the Gilcrees Nature Sanctuary and our Ward 6 team to rescue a black-crowned knightharren that had become tangled in some fishing line in a tree. I just want to call out the compassion and courage of our firefighters, not only at Station 48, but throughout the city. They really did save the day. And please, as a PSA, please, please, make sure you take your fishing and ducks and birds walking around with the fishing line tangled around their feet. So it really does affect our wildlife. I am pleased and take a personal moment to share that Huxley, one of our foster dogs that we've been taking care of for seven months, has finally found his forever home. While we all miss him so much, we are thrilled that he has finally found a family who will love him as much as we did. And the good news is now we have room for another foster. Turning to our future events, we are thrilled to be bringing some arts and cultural activities to Ward 6. First up next Friday, we're partnering the YMCA to host our first Open Mic Night for Youth. From 6:30 to 8:30 p.m., we're partnering with the Y, and we're looking for youth who have a wide range of talents, from juggling, singing, dancing, whatever your talent is, please come shine and show us. And then the next evening, we're partnering with the Centennial Hills Library to host our second book club, Tales and Mocktails Event. We'll be reading The Bitter Past, another book that focuses on Nevada's unique history. Bruce Borges lives in Ward 4, actually, and is a local author, and his book is a thriller mystery that takes Actually, we'll be there to talk about his book and sign some, some books. Moving, last event is, again, Councilwoman Alan Polanski already mentioned this, please make sure you bring your water, it's going to be a hot evening. It was a great event last week, last year, and we're pleased to be joined with, by Mayor Berkeley this time. So we want to, we want to see you there. As always, we want to hear from you. Please call us at 229-5463, or email us at ward6@lasveganevada.gov. Thank you.
And thank you so much, Councilwoman. This city council meeting is now adjourned.